All right, good afternoon, everyone. It is 3:00 P.M. This is the Finance and Performance Committee. I'm Councilman John Bullock, Chair of the Committee. I'm also joined by our colleague and member of the Committee, Councilmember Felicia Porter of the 10th District. We are also joined by our wonderful staff to the Committee, Marguerite Curran, as well as representatives of the Council President's Office, the Mayor's Office, Department of Finance, and City Schools, as well as Planning. So we're going to go ahead and get started. Our first of three hearings on the agenda today is Legislative Oversight 21003 Quarterly Budget Briefings for the Bureau of Budget and Management Research, Capital Budget, and Baltimore City Public Schools. We are going to go ahead and get started. I will turn the meeting over at this point to Laura Larson. Oh, we're also being joined by Councilmember Odette Ramos of the 14th District. Thank you for joining us as well. Laura, it's all yours whenever you're ready.
Wonderful. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Council, Laura Larson, City Budget Director. Thank you very much for the opportunity to present to you today. Today, we're here to review with you the preliminary unaudited results of the budget-to-actual performance for the city's general fund for fiscal '24. So that's the fiscal year that ended on June 30th of this year. So on the next slide, you'll see the overall performance of the general fund. Oh, okay. I apologize. So we'll want to go to slide, slide two. Wonderful. So again, the figures and the data that I'll be summarizing for you today are based off of our preliminary unaudited results. So this reflects the year-end performance and then any of the year-end adjustments that are performed by my team in the Budget Bureau in partnership with our city agencies. So in fiscal '24, we are anticipating that the city's general fund will end the year with approximately a $58 million surplus. That's driven by $77 million of surplus revenue, or a 3.5% variance from our budget assumptions, offset by an 18.7 deficit within our general fund expenditures. That's a variance of about 0.8%. So some of the big takeaways from these numbers are that we continue to see strong, and if we just want to go back and then back one more slide. Yeah. So some of the major takeaways from these numbers are that the city's general fund revenue is relatively strong. We continue to see strength in our three largest revenue streams, the property tax, the income tax, and highway user revenue. But what is causing, what is reason for pause is what is happening on the expenditure side of the budget and what we're seeing in terms of agency deficits. And what we can attribute that to is service levels exceeding the budgeted level, purchasing activity that is crossing multiple years and causing some disruption to how we look at budget-to-actuals, and then our ongoing challenges around ensuring that we're charging expenditures to the correct funding source. We want to make sure that if something was budgeted to be charged to a grant, it's getting charged to the grant versus the general fund. One thing that's important to note is, in the fiscal '24 budget, we did assume that we would have to utilize $30 million from the city's unassigned fund balance. And it turns out, we're not going to have to pull from that funding source, which is good news, because then we can continue to reserve that fund balance for other emergencies or unplanned expenditures. One major caveat that I want to flag for everyone is that there are a series of outstanding transactions that may impact these numbers. So we are still going back and forth on three to five transactions that will be resolved as we work with our colleagues in the Bureau of Accounting and Payroll Services as we move through the fiscal '24 year-end process. So when you do see the final financial statements, you may see slightly different numbers than what I'm presenting to you today. So what I'd like to do is to walk through what's happening here, first by looking at what's happening on the revenue side, and then shifting gears and talking a little bit about what we're seeing in terms of expenditures. So if we go to the next slide. And then we'll go to the, great. So as I mentioned, the general fund revenues are projected overall to have a $77 million surplus for the prior fiscal year. That's $32 million higher than what we had projected at the third quarter. And I'll walk through some of the variations and where that, where our assumptions changed. But as I just mentioned, our three largest revenue streams are strong. Property tax revenue came in higher than previously projected, driven by higher than previously assumed collection rates and assumptions regarding our overall assessment base. Income tax came in higher than previously projected due to the final dispersments that we received during the fourth quarter. And then highway user revenue and investment earnings were consistent with previous projections, but continued to show significant strength for fiscal '24. The next slide shows you the revenue projection, just broken out by different categories of revenue streams. And as I mentioned, we'll walk through the variance in each one of these. And then the next slide is just showing specifically what we deem local taxes. So this is things like our property and income tax, but other revenue streams, including transfer and recordation, energy tax, telecommunication, et cetera. So as I mentioned, if we go to the next slide, we can see what the variation looked like for our major revenue streams. And so this slide is showing us the four largest surplus revenue streams and then the three largest deficit revenue streams in the general fund. So as you can see, income tax and investment earnings collectively are our two areas of greatest strength in the city's general fund for fiscal '24. Both of those ended the year with a surplus of just over $27 million. Property tax ended the year with a $15.3 million surplus and HUR with a $9.6 million surplus. On the flip side, the largest deficits that we saw were for cable and franchise fees, telecommunication tax, and red light cameras. So let's talk about each one of those in a little bit more detail. So if we go to the next slide, again, we'll talk about the surplus revenue streams first in order of largest surplus to smallest. So first up would be income taxes. So the fiscal '24 budget assumed $447.5 million from income tax revenue, and we ended the year with a $27.7 million surplus in this revenue stream. The table on this slide is showing you what makes up the income tax dispersments that we receive from the state of Maryland. So first up are our non-quarterly dispersments. So this is essentially reconciliation that the state does to true up the dispersments that we receive based off of the state income tax receipts. That's a once-a-year that they do this, this is a cleanup that they do periodically. And in fiscal '24, based off of that reconciliation, there was a $19.4 million surplus against what we had assumed in the budget. Quarterly dispersments, these are the income tax receipts that are paid based off of regular employment-based income tax. And these receipts were up by $7.6 million compared to our budget assumptions. So those two components make up $27 million of the surplus. Next up are unallocated and fiduciary returns. So unallocated withholdings are unclaimed taxes that get reconciled back out to local jurisdictions by the state once a year. So in fiscal '24, we received $6.1 million more than what we had assumed in our original assumptions. And then fiduciary returns are non-employer-based income taxes that are paid by individuals. Those actually came in slightly under budget by $5.4 million. So the net of all those things is what gets us to the $27.7 million surplus. Next up is investment earnings. So in the fiscal '24 budget, we had assumed that we would receive just over $26 million in investment earnings. And our final year-end estimate showed that that revenue stream is coming in about $27.6 million higher than budget. One of the things that's important to note when it comes to investment earnings is that this, like some of our other general fund revenue sources, can be very volatile. And the volatility here is largely driven by factors that are outside of the city's control. The biggest factor here is what's happening in the broader, in the broader market. And so what we've seen is that, as interest rates were higher, we were able to receive a higher return on our short-term cash investments. So in fiscal '24, we had assumed that we would receive a 2.8% return on our short-term investments. We wound up receiving a 5.7% return. And so that is really what was driving the higher revenue. But it is important to note that, as we saw during the pandemic, this can swing the other way. When interest rates are very low, our returns here would also follow that trend. Next up is property taxes. So this is our, the largest revenue stream in the general fund. This represents just under 50% of total general fund revenue. It's budgeted at just under, in fiscal '24, it's budgeted at just under $1.1 billion. We ended the year with approximately a $14 million surplus. You can see there the different components of property tax revenue, including real property, the different components of personal property, and then the assessment tax credit. You can see the surplus and deficit for each of the different factors. A couple of items to note here is, in the budget, we had assumed a 97.5% collection rate, and that's consistent with what we saw in fiscal '24. Our, the city's overall tax base declined from what was originally included in the budget by about $257 million. That's the result of appeals that had happened throughout the fiscal year in fiscal '24. I do want to note that every year, we do assume that there will be some level of tax base declines based off of these appeals. And actually, what we saw in fiscal '24 was that the revenue lost from appeals was less than what we had assumed in the budget. So that was, that was good news. So we always assume that there are going to be appeals. What we actually saw in fiscal '24 was that the actual appeals were less than what we had assumed in the budget. And then finally, on the personal property tax side, we are seeing that for individuals and firms and businesses and corporation, those items came in slightly under budget. That was due to assessments. And the area where we're seeing the growth on utilities, that's primarily driven by what's happening with the BGE assessment. So next up is highway user revenue. So this is revenue that we received based off of an allocation from the state of Maryland. In fiscal '24, we had assumed that we would receive $193 million. We ended the year receiving about $9.5 million more than what we had projected. Our highway user revenue that we receive is driven by an allocation formula that includes different inputs. This chart here is showing you the different inputs of the statewide formula. So those include things like fuel tax receipts, corporate income tax, sales tax, titling tax, and vehicle registration. There are two components of the highway user revenue formula that are showing strength and that are contributing to the surplus. That's the corporate income tax component and the titling tax component. That titling tax is what folks are paying when they're registering their car. So in fiscal '24, in the fiscal, in, throughout fiscal '24, we were projecting this strength in our highway user revenue. That's why, if you recall, in the fiscal '25 budget, we did appropriate some of this anticipated surplus for additional transportation-related capital projects. What I can say is that, based off of these final year-end numbers, is that it does look like there will be additional funding that can be available for additional capital spending that would be, that would be subject to a future supplemental that would come before the council. So that's it for the surplus revenue items. Let's switch gears here and talk about the general fund sources that ended the year with a deficit. So first up is telecommunication tax. So this is the tax that individuals pay on either a cellphone or a landline. It's a $4 a line charge. And what we're seeing is that, overall, the number of telephone lines issued to city residents is declining. And so what that means in fiscal '24 is that the actual revenue received from this, from this source was about $1.4 million lower than what we had assumed in the fiscal '24 budget. Next up is cable franchise fees, and so that would be on the next slide. This is the, this is part of the agreement that Comcast pays with the city for providing cable services. And what we are seeing in the city is that, just like many other places, the number of cable subscribers in our community is rapidly declining. And so in fiscal '24, the actual revenue from this source was about $1.2 million, less than what we had assumed in the budget. I should note that we are currently renegotiating the agreement with Comcast, and that, and those negotiations are ongoing. And it's not clear at this point when exactly we would know, when exactly that will be finalized in a way that we can incorporate it in the budget. Next up is red light camera violations. So the budget had assumed about $12.2 million in revenue from these, from these violations. We actually, the final year-end amount came in about just under $3 million, less than what we had projected. I should note, this is just red light. So we spend, we've, I've spent a lot of time talking with you about other components of the city's traffic camera program that would include our speed cameras and our I-83. These are just the red light cameras that are affixed to traffic signals throughout the city. What we're seeing in fiscal '24, in fiscal '24 is the continuation of a trend where the average number of citations per camera for red light only is declining. And so what that means, and what we saw in fiscal '24 was that the average number of citations per camera were at the lowest that we had seen since 2018, or continuing a trend that we've seen downward since 2018. When we look at the overall traffic camera program, if you'll recall, in the fiscal '24 budget, we did some redeployment of our speed camera, our speed cameras. And those, that is because those are more portable. So what we could do is, we could relocate our speed cameras to different areas in the city in order to align with our pedestrian and traffic safety goals. Red light cameras are harder to move, and so they are relatively static and stationary in terms of where they are installed. And so whereas with the speed cameras, we're able to move them to sort of get around people getting used to where the cameras are, these red light cameras are more stationary and less, and we're not able to re-deploy them as easily. So that is it for the revenue side. So I'd like to switch gears now and talk about what we're seeing on the expenditure side. So first, so as I mentioned, we ended the, we are projecting to have ended the year with an overall expenditure deficit across general fund agencies of about $18.7 million. This is a little bit of a good news, bad news situation. So we never want to end the year with, with a deficit in terms of agency spending. But the good news, the silver lining here is that the deficit is less than what I reported to you when I was here at third quarter. We, the projection is $32 million better than what we were projecting at the third quarter. There were a couple of things that were really driving that change. First is debt service. There was some refunding that happened with our debt service, where we ended up not having to pay up to the full budgeted amount for debt service. And that took place in the fourth quarter. We didn't know that that was going to happen in our third quarter projections. In our third quarter projections, we also highlighted areas where there was overspend in agency budgets, because there were grant expenditures sitting in the general fund. The good news there is that we saw a lot of cleanup in the fourth quarter by our city agencies, where they were moving those transactions to the correct grant. And then finally, we just saw that, in some cases, agency spending had slowed down a little bit in the fourth quarter, or where they thought that there was going to be more spending in the fourth quarter. It wound up being at a slower pace than what we had previously projected. So in presenting the expenditure deficit, we'll talk about agencies that had a surplus, ended the year a budget, and those with a deficit. But before I get to that, we've also spent a lot of time in this body talking about what's happening with vacancies. And so I did just want to spend a moment to report out on the progress the city's made on filling vacant positions. So on the next slide, we can see what those trends look like over the course of fiscal '24. So this, so overall, there was a 10% decline in vacancies for, in the general fund. We're looking specifically at general fund positions. The green line is showing civilian positions, and the blue line is showing sworn positions, and then the dotted line is showing the overall trend. So what's happening here is that we are seeing an increase in sworn vacancies. So this is an increase in vacancies in our fire and police department. And that is offset by a drop in vacancies in our civilian positions of almost 19% over the course of the fiscal year. Much of that improvement on the civilian side is, we can point to, you know, very targeted hiring efforts throughout city agencies. But a big driver there was what was happening at the Department of Public Works, and a lot of intentionality in public works in getting up to a higher staffing level that included filling prior vacancies, but also filling vacancy, also filling the slots for the new crews that were funded as part of the '24 budget. So these trends are moving definitely in the right direction. So let's switch gears now and talk about the overall, overall agency spending. So agencies that ended the year with a surplus, and so these would be agencies that we deem, where we deem they had a significant surplus. So that's a surplus of greater than 10%. I won't list all of these in total. What I can say is that agencies with a surplus that represented approximately just over, between $60 and $70 million in fiscal '24. Next up, on the next slide, you can see the agencies that ended the year essentially at budget. And these are agencies where a budget surplus was between 0 and 10%. Again, I won't go through all of the, list all these out. These agencies ended the year with approximately just over $30 million in surplus across the six agencies here. And then finally, the agencies that ended the year in deficit. I will take time to walk through each of these one by one. What you're looking at here on the chart is the agency, what the final year-end deficit was, and then what the changes from the third quarter. So if there's a red arrow going up, that means that the, the final year-end spending was higher than what we projected at the third quarter. If there's a green arrow going down, that means the deficit got smaller based off of actions taken by the agency in the fourth quarter. And if it's a static horizontal line, that means that the final year-end spend was consistent with our third quarter projections. So first up is the Board of Elections. They ended the fiscal year with a $1.4 million deficit. It was about $560,000 higher than what we reported at the third quarter. The deficit here was driven by higher-than-budgeted election staffing costs, staffing costs, expanding early voting, and then some unbudgeted purchasing activity. The Department of Finance ended the year with a $4.2 million deficit. That's $3.8 million lower than what we had projected at the third quarter. That deficit is primarily driven by unbudgeted contractual activity to support payroll and the finance project management functions, as well as prior year purchasing activity hitting in fiscal '24. The Fire Department ended the year with approximately, with a deficit of just under $33 million. That was consistent with what we reported at the third quarter. This deficit is being driven by sworn overtime. That's exceeding savings that we are realizing from vacant positions and utilizing unbudgeted contractual services to supplement EMS staffing. The Health Department ended the year with a $5.1 million deficit. Again, that's consistent with our third quarter projections. This is largely driven by some late billing, late vendor billing activity for lingering costs associated with the COVID-19 response and then various clinical services provided by the department. B-SIT ended the year with a $1.9 million deficit. This is higher, we were not projecting a deficit for B-SIT at the third quarter. This is driven by contractual costs that exceeded budget assumptions. And these are largely contracts to support various software systems that are utilized by the city. On the next slide, we'll look at the next batch of agencies. The Law Department ended the year with a $1.5 million deficit, again, consistent with third quarter projections. This is primarily driven by staffing costs that exceeded the budgeted amounts, primarily from reclassifications. The Liquor Board ended the year with a $300,000 deficit, driven by unbudgeted moving costs that were incurred in fiscal '24. Our Art and Culture Grants ended the year with a $1.5 million deficit. And this is driven by costs that the city pays for benefits for staff at the Walters and the Baltimore Museum of Art. Those costs were under budgeted in the fiscal '24 budget. The Convention Center Hotel ended the year with a $900,000 deficit. And this is related to the city's obligation being higher than what we had initially forecast in fiscal '23. The Mayor's Office of Homeless Services ended the year with a $2.6 million deficit. That's down from the third quarter by about $3.5 million. And that, the improvement in their forecast was driven by reallocating expenditures to the, to correct grants. But the ongoing deficit is driven by sheltering costs that exceed the budget, exceed the budgeted amount. The Labor Commissioner ended the year with a $1.9 million deficit. Again, this is higher than what we had forecast at the third quarter. This is primarily driven by contractual legal services to support our labor negotiation process. And on the next slide, we'll see the final batch of agencies. The Police Department ended the year with a $3.1 million deficit. This is an improvement of $8.2 million compared to the third quarter. The deficit here is driven by leave payout costs from members who left the department in fiscal '24. The Department of Public Works ended the year with a $5.6 million deficit. This is $1.3 million higher than the third quarter projections. This is driven by equipment costs and overtime costs. The Department of Recreation and Parks ended the year with a $3.7 million deficit. That's $1.3 million lower than the third quarter projection. The improvement was driven by moving costs to eligible grants. And the remaining deficit is primarily driven by contractual and overtime costs associated with urban forestry, as that service works to reduce its backlog. The Sheriff's Office ended the year with a $4.5 million deficit, $2 million higher than third quarter. This is driven primarily by staff overtime costs and unbudgeted purchasing activity. And then finally, the Department of Transportation ended the year with a $600,000 deficit, $3.3 million lower than original forecast. And this deficit is driven primarily by our snow costs from last winter, and then lower than assumed chargebacks to capital projects. So that is the full magnitude of our agencies that ended the year with a deficit. I just want to wrap up by previewing for you the closeout legislative actions that will come before the council for consideration. So on the next slide, you'll see two items that we, that we are working to bring before you. The first item is, will be a retroactive budget supplemental to address the agencies that went over budget in fiscal '24. So our charter requires that agencies end the year within the budgeted amount. So we will be bringing forth a series of supplementals that will increase the appropriations for agencies that exceeded their budgeted amounts. That supplemental will be funded either through a combination of transferring unused appropriation from other agencies, as well as appropriating some of the surplus revenue that we received in fiscal '24. However, the net impact of all those changes will be consistent with what I talked about here, where we'll be, the overall general fund will be ending with approximately a $58 million surplus pending those outstanding entries. And then the other item is a fund balance appropriation, and that will impact fiscal '25. This is essentially replacing our carryforward process that we've been working to retool now that we are in our new workday environment. The fund balance appropriation is a supplemental to appropriate just under $54 million from the city's unassigned unrestricted fund balance. These are for one-time, non-recurring items, and largely seeking to fund, per balance. These are for one-time, non-recurring items and largely seeking to fund purchasing activities that straddle multiple fiscal years. We just saw a couple of instances of where that caused agencies to go over budget in fiscal 24. But this, this item also includes funding for a number of priority items that have emerged following adoption of the budget, where we need to appropriate funds in order to meet commitments for fiscal 25. That item was approved by the Board of Estimates yesterday. We are working to have that introduced at the, at the council meeting next Monday so that we can get that scheduled for a hearing and get those appropriations in place. So with that, I can take any additional questions that you all may have regarding fiscal 24.
Well, first, thank you for being thorough as always. I have one quick question before we go to Councilmember Rambo. So, you know, throughout the presentation, at least toward the end, you mentioned some of the items where the service levels exceeded the budgeted amount, and you talked about some of the unbudgeted activity. We want to make sure we're, obviously, that our agencies are delivering services but not overspending. So can you talk about any controls or any plans you have in place to try to curb overspending?
Yes, definitely. You know, obviously, it's very important to us that the, the budget reflects the spending plan for the upcoming year and that agencies are adhering to the plan once it's adopted. Our office is involved in monitoring position-related activity that would include position creations, reclassifications, hiring. And so we will continue to be very diligent in terms of how we monitor hiring activity to ensure that those actions are consistent with the budget. We continue to work with our partners in procurement to try to understand how we can increase the Budget Bureau's visibility for pending contractual items so that we can ensure that they're consistent with the budget assumptions. I think where it is a challenge is on things like overtime. We don't have a way to see that and to turn it off. I think it's also hard in aspects of city operations where we have daily minimum staffing requirements coupled with high vacancy rates, and we're forced into having to rely on overtime to fill shifts. And so we are, you know, continuing to work very, very closely with the city administrator and with city agencies to ensure that agencies who are having a hard time staying within budget have plans in place so that they can stay within their fiscal 25 budgets. The end of, the first quarter of fiscal 25 ended on Monday, so we are waiting for the accounting month to formally close so that we can pull our data and prepare our forecasts. We will continue to work really closely with agencies who are projecting to go over budget and work with them to identify plans of what we need to put in place in order to try to get within budget. I think some of this, though, is going to come down to policy decisions about what is the service level we want to fund for some of these operations. Some of the deficits that I'm presenting to you here today are not new in fiscal 25, and we've seen them sort of year in and year out. And so I think we have to sort of grapple with, do we want to, you know, do we want to make a change and, and try to get and make some modifications so that the city, the agency can start operating within the budgeted amount? Or do we want to look at expand, increasing the budget and then adjusting and looking at what that would look like and what would be the service impacts of increasing the budget as well? And how would we accommodate that on a recurring basis?
Thank you, Councilmember Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I guess, staying on that point, particularly around the overtime piece, you know, sometimes overtime occurs because we have vacancies. And so how, how do we, the vacancies are for various reasons, and you touched on a couple of them. You know, we're still working on the salary survey to make sure that, you know, the salaries are higher in some cases. There's obviously natural attrition, but then there's, you know, trying to recruit. So I guess I'm, are, are the deficiencies on all of the agencies, but particularly those that have high overtime, it's all about the vacant positions. Isn't that correct?
Yeah, I, I think in some cases, it's, it's hard to, to paint with broad strokes here. I think you really, we really have to sort of look at this issue, police and fire versus the, the civilian agencies. Police and fire, you really have to look at differently just because the, the runway to train those staff is so much longer than what we, the runway, you know, that, that it would take to train an accountant in the, in the Finance Department. So in regards to police and fire, we all have a vested interest, you know, city leadership, frontline staff, the management of those agencies, to have those agencies be more fully staffed than they are today. And so we continue to participate in conversations at a management level with the union to really understand what do we need to do, what can we do to be more successful in digging out of these high vacancy numbers. And I, I know that, that both Commissioner Worley and Chief Wallace are both very focused on, on what those strategies look like for those two departments. I think in our civilian agencies, we've actually seen with a spotlight what happens when we are really intentional about trying to staff up. And I think the Department of Public Works is a great case study to see that in fiscal 24. I was presenting numbers here for you on the aggregate, but if you look at this for just the Bureau of Solid Waste, it's even more dramatic in terms of the, the progress that was made in that agency in one fiscal year. And so I think what it really comes down to is continuing to be incredibly intentional between the agencies and the Department and HR to figure, you know, to be very intentional about how we recruit, hire, onboard, and train. And as we do that, also pivot our mind to retention so that once we make those investments and new employees, they're staying with us, they have a runway to grow in their career, and that we can start to kind of move on from these high vacancy numbers.
That will, I think, probably require some of those policy decisions that you also mentioned, right? Because if we're saying, you know, we want to hire more people and we want to retain them, there may be some other investments that we actually have to make, and so those budgets might grow. And it sounds like those were some of the things that we wanted to make, and so made those decisions, knowing that we might end up being in deficit. That's kind of what it sounds like. So we may have to rethink that for the new budget. Am I characterizing that correctly?
So obviously, the, the big piece that we are thinking about for fiscal 26 is how do we strike that balance? We, our shared goal is to implement the salary study. So how do we, how do we get to a place where we can implement those recommendations so that we can have employees with these longer step increases, we can give them meaningful increases, but how do we, how do we do that in a way that we can afford it? And then, I think beyond that, we have to look at some of the non-economics that go into employees' decisions to work here as well as stay here at the City of Baltimore. And I think some, certainly, economics and compensation is a factor, but certainly there are other factors as well that are not always about salary. And I think we have to make sure we are coming at it from both angles.
Yeah, thank you. My second question was just quickly about the fund balance transfer at the end. Can you talk about that again? Is, what's the source? Is it part, is the, the, the fact that we have the surplus going to be what the source is for, for that? Can you, do you mind explaining that a little bit?
Yeah, so the source is the city's unassigned unrestricted fund balance. It's coincidence that the numbers are close. Yeah, it's, that's a coincidence. It's not intentional. As of the closeout for fiscal 23, the city's unrestricted fund balance was between 160 and 170 million dollars. So we'll be pulling from that to fund some of these items. And then if all of these numbers hold, then we would be returning, you know, another 50-plus million dollars to fund balance in the course of completing the fiscal 24 closeout.
Thank you. I have another question, but I can yield to my colleagues.
Councilmember Porter, any questions?
Laura, I wanted to talk through, let me go back to your slide presentation real quick. The investment earnings, I believe it was the second slide under general fund projected surplus. For the investment earnings, we know that there are, we know that there is challenging, a challenging economic climate coming in the next couple of years. How are we, how are we kind of preserving this surplus that we do have in 2024? And what is the city doing to project the absorption of the economic climate coming in the next three to five years?
Yeah. I will, I'm going to start an answer, and then my Assistant Budget Director Pedro Ponte may, may build on it. So in terms of, certainly, as I was mentioning, this revenue stream can be very volatile, very impacted by what's happening in the, in the broader economy. What's happening here, so we will, we are very intentional not to commit this surplus to any sort of recurring expense. We were also careful, if you recall, in the fiscal 25 budget, we did increase what we were assuming for investment earnings, but for the, the portion of that strength that was above and beyond kind of our base forecast, we actually allocated that to one-time costs as well, just so that revenue from the source is not supporting, you know, like a major wage increase or, exactly. So we have, have factored that into our long-term projections. That being said, we have, have also benefited from a, from very smart action taken by the Bureau of Treasury Management in terms of how they are structuring our short-term investments. And what they've been able to do is lock in some rates, lock in some returns based off of the higher rate, higher rates that we're seeing now. And so we should still see the impact of that for the next couple of years while we're locked in. And so, and that is something that they're constantly monitoring to try to sort of make the most of the market. And they're also, you know, monitoring the situation on a daily basis in terms of how they're pivoting in terms of strategy.
So you, you actually answered, you actually answered my question. One, the volatility of the rates, but also the locked-in rates. I'm glad that we have some sort of, some sort of absorption there where it's not continuously fluctuating based on, based on the return. My second question actually has to do with the, you mentioned the Comcast negotiations are currently happening. Was there a letter of support submitted from the council?
We are very preliminary in those negotiations. And so I, I say that to say, you know, Comcast is seeing the same data that we're seeing in terms of the subscribers dropping off. And so we're in the very early phases with them to figure out what this, what a new agreement should look like. And so that is, those efforts are being led by the Law Department and then Todd Carter from B-SIT. And so I, I'm certain that they will be bringing the council along as, as we go through that process.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask a formal request, please. If we can have a status update on those Comcast negotiations, particularly where they are in the negotiations, the negotiating strategies, and also the outcomes of the previous negotiating meetings that have happened thus far. Yes, that's it for now. Thank you.
And thank you for the request, because again, clarity on that front would be very helpful. So thank you for raising that. Councilmember Ramos, you have another question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Highway user revenues. No surprise. So obviously, this, we're seeing, you know, the increase because of the state allocation as well into these categories. We will have to take more action at the state level in 2027. Right, yes, fiscal year, we have to start thinking about it now.
Yes, and we, you know, my office, the Department of Transportation, the Planning Department's working really closely with the Mayor's Office of Government Relations and the Administration so that we start talking about it now, because these dollars are so pivotal to what we're doing in terms of investments in our transportation infrastructure. And it's, it's vitally important that we sustain this increased funding.
Yes, and I, I think that with the changes to the laws in Virginia about Virginia tags, as well as the changes to the laws here, hopefully we'll see some other increases related to the registration and the titling tax. And, you know, the titling tax, I think it was interesting that you actually saw an increase in that, you know, given, given all of that. So I just wanted to make sure we were starting to have those conversations about what we do, because the fact that we saw more money coming in than anticipated because of these things is important, but we also know that we need to start taking action and start having these conversations, because they only gave us four years in the new, new levels. So I'm glad that you're already starting to think about what that strategy looks like, but also showing the, what we've done, right? I mean, we've actually done a lot with the funds that we've gotten so far, which is, which is great. So I want to make sure that we're also showing that as well. Thank you.
Any just one question? Yeah, Councilmember Porter, please.
Thank you. Director Larson, I wanted to just ask about the methodology of how you all are tracking budgets versus actuals versus planned and how that changes over time for each quarter. So one of the, one of the things that, just reviewing the, the numbers that you had mentioned, there are some agencies where we know are higher. Their, their actuals are higher than the actual budgeted amount. There are some that are lower. How are you all reallocating or recalibrating over, over time, basically over quarter to quarter?
Yeah. So what we, what we've done is, you know, I guess, let me talk about our quarterly process, and then let me talk about how that flows into how we build the budget. So we, you know, do a formal citywide quarterly projection for every general fund agency and every general fund revenue source at the first, second, and third quarter, and then we go through this closeout process. What we're doing through, our goal through that process is to look at current trend data and try to predict where we think we're going to be at the end of the year. And I, on the expenditure side, we try to take account when contracts are going to get signed, what agency hiring plans are, and, and what that looks like, and then also just sort of what the normal spend down looks like. And that's really what, what drives our, our projection process on the expenditure side. I think what may, what has made, what has been tricky in both fiscal 23 and fiscal 24 is the acclimation to the new system. And so what has happened is we see a lot of things, like I've been talking about, mischarging to the general fund, or, you know, big delays in procurement, and then all of a sudden, you know, two years' worth of a contract will, will get charged. And so I think that has been a little bit trickier for my team and I to be able to really pinpoint super accurately. And that's where our partnership with agencies is really important, so that we're getting the best information possible. What I can say is that I think we've made a lot of progress in the last six months. So, for example, when we loaded the fiscal 25 budget into Workday, we also went through, and for all of the positions that were not budgeted in the general fund, we, we worked with payroll to make sure that those positions had the correct accounts on them so that they could be charged directly, correctly, the first time. We, the procurement team is working on changing their methodology around how they handle multi-year contracts so that we get more accurate information about what is assumed for that contract in a fiscal year. So those sort of systematic changes are helping, are happening and will give us better data. And I think what that, we've, coupled with that, we are also working on deploying new tools that help agencies be better managers of their funds. I think part of what we've seen over the last two fiscal years in this new, I hate to keep going back to the new system, but in, in this environment, we've had to get used to a new way to consume major data sets. And one of those data sets is budget-to-actual data. And so we've been deploying new tools to help managers and really operational people understand and consume that information. We've deployed dashboards to help managers look at where their budget-to-actual spending is at any given point in a year. We've developed tools to help them look at their position status, their vacancy trends, et cetera, so that they can kind of understand if they're trending over and they need to make a choice to stay within budget, they have the tools to be able to do that.
So I appreciate that response. So I appreciate that response. It's a little bit alarming that we still, two years post the transition into this new technology, that we haven't really captured that down yet. Essentially, what you, what you've described is either a large carryover into the next year or you've essentially blown your budget. And so it, it doesn't really track with the accuracy over time, but it doesn't really provide a, it doesn't really provide a opportunity for accurate tracking for the agencies. And so I wonder if we can put a timetable on that so that we at least have some sort of standardized training and also caps on budget line items. So making sure that we have some sort of like overtime caps or service delivery cap so that problematic agencies that typically do go over, they do have some sort of checkpoint in with your office or some sort of office if they do go over or under. Like there, I, I know you all do economic modeling where you can see over time where they're supposed to hit. And if they're not hitting that within a five to 10% or over five to 10%, that, that needs to be addressed.
Yeah, and, and agree. And that is something that I've been working really closely with CIO Leach on. And we will be utilizing OPI and the city set, setting to do quarterly report outs on where agencies are trending in their budget and really identify these agencies that are trending over and develop plans to get them to stay within budget. And, and it, and I appreciate the comment about the system and that it's been a long time. And I agree because I share the frustration. But I think we have to keep in mind that fiscal '24 was our first full year where we had a budget in the system and we had a, you know, we had the benefit of seeing everything in one system. So I, I do think that this is going to look different when I'm here in a year, talking to you about fiscal '25. When I'm here in a year reporting out on how we're ending the current fiscal year. I, I, I do believe that we will be in a stronger place.
All right, well, thank, thank you for both the presentation and the questions. I know there will be some more, but at this point, I do want to turn it over to the Planning Department. We see our Director Chris Ryer, we see Sarah as well, so we'll turn it over at this point to talk about the city's capital budget. Also, I apologize, I'll be stepping out briefly, but in my stead, we'll be asking Councilmember Porter to chair while I'm away. But you can get going with your presentation and I will be listening.
Thank you. Do I have to come over there? Okay, there's a lot going on. There's a lot going on in that seat. I don't want to. Oh, there's a lot going on in that seat. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, thank you. Director Ryer, are we ready?
Yes.
Okay, great. You can get started, sir.
Good afternoon, Council. Mr. Chair. My name is Chris Ryer. I'm the Director of Planning for the City and Sarah Parnell. I'm the Head of our Office of Policy and Data Analysis, which does the capital budget for the City of Baltimore. Will do the presentation. But first, I want to, I want to start with a little, a bit of overview. A lot of, a lot of what you're going to see today, you've already seen in the past. But we have been working very closely with the Department of Finance and more recently OPI to really transform this capital budgeting system. And the goal, or one of the goals, is to increase transparency and, and the accuracy of our accounting of the capital budget. We have, we have never done this before. So historically, the Planning Department has been responsible for creating the capital budget on the front end, working with the agencies to determine priorities, guide them towards the, the overall comprehensive plan of the city. But it does, it has never historically monitored the capital budget the way the Department of Finance monitors the operating budget. That is one of the things we are proposing to change and we are in the midst of that. But we are also in the midst of changing over from Workday, importing a lot of data over that has proven to be inaccurate, working with the temp agency and the Department of Finance to clean up all that data. And I think my hope and pledge to you is that by next year, next May's budget hearing, we are going to have our act together.
Thank you. And Director, I'm so sorry to interrupt. There are 27 slides. How long is the presentation?
I'd say it's 20 minutes.
20 minutes? All right, thank you, sir.
So we'll start, we'll start with that very general overview and then we're going to walk you through that change process and where we are in it. Okay, Sarah, you want to take it from here?
Yes. Good afternoon, Sarah Parnell. I'm Division Chief for Policy and Data Analysis. Thank you so much for having us. So as Director Ryer said, the Planning Department prepares the city's capital budget. And so we wanted to start by reminding the council of the FY '25 budget and, and sort of what the process is. So we can go to the next slide. The Planning Department, the Planning Commission by charter is responsible for recommending the six-year capital program to the Board of Estimates on an annual basis. And the budget year, the first year of that six-year program is approved by the council. And that process starts again each year. We're really excited this year with our new budgeting platform, Adaptive, that we're not starting from scratch this year, but that we're starting from what was in the approved program for last year. So as we're kicking off the FY '26 process, we're using the program for FY '25 through FY '30 as the starting point. And we'll be able to make comparisons as to what agencies are proposing to change from the previously, previously approved programs. That's very exciting. Next slide.
And can I say, Adam, it's a big deal to, to do it, right?
There's a lot of things in here that I think you could categorize as big deals. We have some pretty exciting news for you today. The next big deal we have in terms of the capital budget is new reports. And so you'll see on the Planning Department's website, we have new reports that provide a lot more detail than we've had in the past. So you can see that we have summaries by agency that includes a map of where the projects are located for those that we have locations for. And then for each individual project, you can see a sample on the right that shows you kind of a locator map as to where the project is located, gives you a description of the project, as well as some of the financial information about it. So we're really excited to have these additional reports. They are lengthy reports, but you can use Ctrl-Find, you know, to, to zero in on the information that you're looking for. Next slide. So I just wanted to start with a reminder of the FY '25 capital budget and look at that both by agency and by source. So you can see that we have local sources included in the capital budget. These are our general funds. This is our general obligation bonds, which will be on the ballot in November. So please urge your constituents to support the general obligation bonds. It's an important piece of the capital budget. This also includes highway user revenue that's dedicated to capital. So there was just a discussion about highway user revenue that's included here as well. And then we have other sources that are included in the capital budget, the largest of which are our utility sources for water, wastewater, and stormwater, also conduit. But we also have funding from the federal government and the state government. And so you can see here, you know, which agencies are relying on local sources and which agencies are relying on some of those other, other funding sources. So this just shows you visually, by agency, you can see that the Department of Public Works, particularly the utilities, is the lion's share of the capital budget. And this varies from year to year, but for FY '25, the utilities were about 60% of the overall capital budget. And then the next largest agency is transportation. Transportation and housing both have significant federal funds and those are the next largest. And then our agencies that rely on local sources, you can see, are much smaller, smaller components of the capital budget. And then you'll see those patterns repeated if we look at it by funding source. So you can see in purple, those are the utility funds. They have to be used for the utilities. We cannot use those funds that are generated through the water bills for, for other projects. And that's why you see that DPW utilities are the largest percentage. Those sources are one of our largest sources for the capital budget. And then you can see that there's a significant wedge there in yellow. That's the federal grants and state grants. Those also are not discretionary at the local level for the large part. They come, come to the city for particular purposes. They have to be used for eligible transportation projects or specific park projects. And so we don't have discretion to use those, you know, across, across city government. The discretion really is in that green wedge, which is the smallest piece of the capital budget. That's our general obligation bonds, our highway user revenue, and then the general fund pay-go. So that's just to, to review and provide the context for the FY '25 budget. But we're going to focus most of the presentation talking about expenditures. We're not going to focus on expenditures related to what was budgeted in FY '25 because those projects just received funding, you know, very recently. So we're going to look at total, total expenditures for all capital projects, including projects that received funding, you know, many years ago, as well as those that received funding recently. And we wanted to start by talking about a few of the challenges that agencies have when they are moving forward with capital projects. And this is a slide that we shared before when we came before the council previously, but it really hasn't changed. So agencies, you know, are experiencing inflation at a scale that I think we haven't really seen before. So they're budgeting for projects, thinking that a project is fully funded, bidding that project. And then it is, it is not fully funded and in large part, that's due to inflation. We also have supply chain issues that are also driving up costs. And, and then we have labor shortages, both in the construction industry as well as within our city agencies in terms of trying to manage these projects and get them implemented. We do see a lengthy timeline in terms of when an agency receives funding for a project and then when they would have fully spent it, right? So it goes through this whole process in terms of planning. Then there is preparing for design, bidding and awarding the design, completing the design, bidding and awarding construction, completing the construction, right? So there isn't an expectation on the capital side that funds will be used in the year that they're budgeted. It really takes multiple years to go through the entire cycle of delivering a capital project. And so that's something just to keep in mind. That has been extended because of a practice of funding projects over multiple years due to limited funding. For this upcoming year and fiscal year '26, we are asking agencies to request full funds for a phase of a project in a single year. So we have hopefully an increased level of geo-bonds with the support of voters. And we're going to be making an effort to fully fund projects to the extent possible so that we're not budgeting over multiple years to build up enough funds to complete a project. The procurement process for, for the design and construction can be very lengthy. And so that's another thing that kind of impacts the schedule of, of when projects are completed. Agencies have to go through various regulatory reviews that are outside of their control. And if those regulatory processes are understaffed, that impacts the project's timeline. And then there are different local mandates that increase their costs as well. So we are in the process of making a bunch of process improvements to address some of these things that slow down capital projects. I already mentioned a couple of them and I wanted to highlight a few, both on the accounting side as well as on the policy side. So we are looking to do more accurate reporting by revenue category. So we're in the process of completing revenue category corrections. I think the Budget Director mentioned, you know, the transition to Workday and challenges with data. Director Ryer mentioned that as well. We've been hard at work on making improvements. And we have been working very hard with our agency partners, as well as the Department of Finance, to do revenue category corrections. The Department of Planning has been leading, leading that effort. We have already completed, I think, 17 different, the revenue categories for 17 different funds, but we have some of the larger ones left. So we still are working on transportation and housing, for example. And then we are also developing and applying appropriation work tags and fund source rules. And I don't want to get too technical here, but in order to be able to track spending by fund source, we need to implement these improvements. And so we have been working on doing that. So the data that we're going to provide to you today is using proxy data and data that is not 100% corrected yet. But we are in process of making those corrections so that we can in the future provide you with data that is not using a proxy and that has accurate revenue categories. We are also working on making this reporting more user-friendly. So as we report to you today, there is going to be some significant caveats to the data that we are providing to you. For example, there are multiple projects, PRJ numbers projects for something that is a single project in the real world, right? A single playground or a single improvement. And so we're working to consolidate those projects and bring those together so that the information is all in one place. We're also working to close out projects that are complete but are still sitting, sitting on our books. So we're making those process improvements as we go forward. We are also making policy changes this year as we kick off FY '26. So we are limiting appropriations without revenue. You will see that there are significant appropriations that are remaining in projects, but many of those appropriations aren't usable. So appropriations exist that are very, very old because they don't expire. Or maybe they are for, you know, federal or state funding that was never realized, that was appropriated with the idea that we might receive a grant, but then we didn't in fact receive that grant. And those appropriations are still sitting in those projects, kind of muddying our reporting. So we're going to be cleaning up those old appropriations, as well as limiting that from happening in the future so that we don't have that situation, so that agencies will have to have a grant work tag before we can appropriate federal and state funding going forward. And then the last policy, policy improvement that I wanted to highlight was reducing the amount of time that funds are appropriated before they're used. So I already mentioned that we are looking to fund the entire phase in a single year. So that will be the, have a big impact on this. And then we're also, as Director Ryer mentioned, doing additional reviewing on a regular basis. So we will be examining spend down on, on projects to prevent funds from just sitting, you know, for an extended time. So, so that was kind of looking forward at what we are doing in terms of process improvements. I wanted to take a moment to celebrate all of the progress that we've made. When we came to the council previously in terms of reporting, we talked about a lot of the challenges that we had in terms of being able to provide the data that I think the council was looking for. And we have made a lot of progress in terms of the accounting and the data that we have available to us. So we have already completed correcting hierarchies and cost centers and other work tags. This information was not correct in Workday and we've gone through with agencies and cleaned all of those up. We had missing data from before 2009. We have restored that. So we have that data now in the system. So these are huge improvements that we've made in the quality of the data and we're very, very excited about those. We still have some things that are underway. So we are in the process, as I mentioned, of correcting revenue categories. And that is one of the caveats for the data that we're going to share today is that the revenue categories are not fully corrected yet. And so we, we have to kind of put And so we we have to kind of put that caveat on the data that we're sharing with you today. I already mentioned that we want to do cleanup of old appropriations and project consolidation. We can't start that yet until we complete the revenue corrections. So that's something that we haven't had a chance to start yet. And then I mentioned also that we're setting up those work tags so that we will no longer have to use a proxy for expenditures. So when we came to you last time, we shared this slide, and we had indicated that this was future analysis that we wanted to do, that as we look at appropriations, you can't just look at totals. And you really need to break down that information, excuse me, by by various different elements. And so you need to look at the appropriations by revenue category. Just looking at a total balance of appropriations really doesn't tell you the story. Because again, as I mentioned, if those are federal appropriations that we never received funding for, it's meaningless, right? So you have to be able to look at it by revenue category. You also need to be able to look at remaining balances by fiscal year. If the agency just received the funding in FY25, you know, it makes sense that that balance would still be there. If they just received it in FY24, it makes sense that that balance would still be there. If they received it in 2014, maybe it doesn't make sense. And so, you know, having having that information really informs kind of how we think about those balances. We also want to understand what the cost estimate of the project is. Is the project fully funded? Or is there additional funding that's needed for the project? And then last but not least, we talked to you about status of project, understanding whether a project was in design, whether the project was in construction, whether the project's in closeout. And so we have for you data today that we're going to share that kind of speaks to each of these. So we have done analysis that includes revenue category, but we know that those revenue categories still need to be corrected. So we in particular know that the general fund revenue is overstated. And so just want to highlight that as we're looking at this data. We have focused our analysis on particular projects. So we're not looking at ARPA. You have a presentation from MORP on capital projects related to ARPA. We're not looking at the utilities. Those are not funds that we can reallocate to other projects. We're not looking at projects that are canceled or closed or unallocated or unallotted projects. And then, as I mentioned, we're using a proxy for revenue category. So we're assigning that on a percentage basis. So when we look at that universe of capital projects, and this is not just looking at FY25, this is looking at all projects that are that are in Workday, with the exceptions that I just mentioned on the previous slide, we can see that there's total appropriations of about $4 billion and that we have expenditures of just over $2 billion and remaining $1.6 billion. But as I mentioned, we have to look at that by by revenue category first. So if we look at the that that total of of balances by revenue category, we can see that that a large portion of that is federal and state grants, then another large portion of that is general fund revenue that hasn't been corrected yet. And so there's about 35% that is either general obligation bonds or general fund revenue that has been corrected. So we know that there's there is a universe of projects where we do want to look at those balances more carefully, and there may be opportunities to reallocate based on revenue category.
So if I could interject, I mean, this is relatively good news. We thought it would be much worse. So if the high level look, a lot of a lot of these unspent funds are federal or state appropriations, which were not real. So we're not in as bad, we're not as behind as we thought we were.
And then the second way that we want to kind of the second lens we want to use to look at the data is by time. And so if we look at projects that were funded recently, just within the last few years since FY23, we can see almost 40% of the balances are for those recent projects. And another 15% or so are for projects that still need additional funding, where there's a request for funding in FY26 or FY27 or FY28. And so there's only about 45% of the projects that received funding from FY22 or prior that have balances. So then on the next slide, if we combine those two and we think about revenue category and about time, we can see that less than 15% of the remaining balances are from FY22 or older and are those revenue categories that would be eligible for reallocation. And so that's where we really want to focus in and look at those projects and see what the status of them is and whether it makes sense to reallocate. FY22 is still relatively recently in the life of a capital project, but it it kind of provides us now a starting point for digging deeper and looking at those projects. Next slide. We also looked at the expenditures and the balances by milestone. And so as you would expect, the majority of the expenditures are for projects that are under construction or are in the closeout phase, whereas the majority of the balances are earlier in the process, right? So
My apologies for interjuking, ma'am. If we could skip to some of the last portions of the slide, I want to make sure that we have time for the ARPA presentation.
Yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
This is really the last slide before the agency slides. So those are really for your information. And if you have questions, I wasn't necessarily going to go through those one by one. But you can just see that the trends are the same, agency by agency, that the the remaining money is in the projects that are earlier in the, you know, this cycle. And then the expenditures are in the in the later phase.
Thank you. Thank you for this very informative presentation, but it's also very thorough as well. So I really do appreciate that. I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Ramos to see if you have any questions, ma'am.
I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a two quest, well, I'll just do two questions and then go off, speak with you all offline. The when when you are going through, I'm so grateful that you're doing this analysis, first of all, okay? Because I think it makes sense first that we're, you know, trying to fully fund projects upfront. I think that makes a lot of sense because of inflation and all the things that you were talking about. But as you're doing this analysis to see kind of where the the remaining funds are, I mean, I think I think these slides are pretty important with the graphs. So we can see like for the 16% that are partially funded. And when you're going through that, if they're not federal and state dollars, and there actually are dollars that and not utility dollars that we have to that we need to figure out what to do with, what's that process? Because I know that I was sitting in a planning commission meeting one time, because I do that, because I have stuff at Planning Commission. And there was a, I forget exactly what the title was, but there was a project that needed to get funding. There was the approval from the Board of Estimates to move funding around from a project that wasn't going to happen anymore because of whatever reason. And into another project, there was no community input, no, nothing. And so what is going to be your process for saying, out of this, I'm just making these numbers up, 45%, there's, you know, 20% that we need to move around to other projects? And what is going to be that process?
So historically, there's not a good answer to this question. Historically, transfers often have been, if they they often have been handled with the Planning Commission on the consent agenda, if they were consistent with the original appropriation. What you're what you noticed was one that was not consistent with the original appropriation. And therein lies the challenge, particularly if it's already been approved by the Board of Estimates. So we're wrestling with that. I don't think we have an answer for you yet. We're trying to identify the scale of the problem right now. But I will give you a hint. The fact that we're starting with last year's CIP is a hint towards good, long-term planning. So I think we'll be able to have a better answer for you in the next six months or so, but that's where we are.
Yeah. And in addition to the transfer process, which is what you're describing, we expect to do some changes through the CIP. So agencies will have an opportunity to request deappropriations from projects that are no longer moving forward and moving those funds to projects that are a priority. And so then that would go through the whole, you know, approval process that the capital budget goes through, and there would be transparency there. So that would be an opportunity for people to weigh in.
Yeah. If you can report back to us what your process is going to be, if it's not inside the CIP, what is it, what that's going to look like? And I'll make that as a committee request.
Official committee request?
Yeah. Sure, I'll restate it, just to to get what the transfer process is going to be after your evaluation. And the second question is related. I have always thought that even though there is, you know, the Planning Commission hearings and that kind of thing, we don't, we, the council, do not see the capital budget until we get it during budget, not even budget time. It's like right at the end of the process. And I think that the council needs to have, I mean, you've seen I pop in on some of those hearings on Planning Commission, but they're not as well advertised. They're not the same advertisement as we have to do on our hearings. There's no, well, there is public testimony because I've testified. But I think that we, there has to be a process in the capital budget. If you're redoing the whole thing, we need to be more of a part, we, the council and the public, need to be more of a part of the process. So I would recommend, and maybe we can work with, you know, once we start the new term, we we need to be a part of those hearings or we need to have other hearings. We need to be a part of it, asking our questions ahead of time. Because we don't actually get that full list and the document until after. The Planning Commission does. The Planning Commission is not an elected body. The Planning Commission is an appointed body. You are an appointed official. We are elected by the residents and voters of the city and need to have more of a say and more transparency around the capital budget. So what I'm asking is that part of your reevaluation of the process should include how you're going to include the city council in a much more proactive way than just at the end of the process where we just went through a week of, you know, grueling hearings and are expected to pass a capital budget that we didn't even get a chance to ask questions on.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. And I think you bring up a great point that I would love to kind of centralize from the mayor's office. So if you can get together, the councilwoman, I would love to be in on that hearing, I mean, that meeting, excuse me, and then Director Ryer, your people from your team so that we can really formulate a process that we can take into the next term. So I would actually like to make that an official committee request as well. Thank you so much. I'll yield my time to the next presentation. So right now, we're going to go into recess in order for us to go into the next hearing. So we're in recess for two minutes. Thank you.
All right. So good afternoon. Thank you all for being here today. We are going to move ahead with City Council Resolution 210062R, American Rescue Plan Quarterly Oversight. We're pleased to have Shamaya Kearney with us to go into your presentation. Again, we are joined by Councilmember Porter, member of the committee, and also Councilmember Ramos, along with staff of the committee, Mark Recur. So please jump right in. Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon, honorable members of the council, Baltimore city residents and interested parties. My name is Shamaya Kearney, and I have the honor and privilege to serve as the chief recovery officer for the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs. This afternoon, I'm joined by my team. And as always, I wish to thank this amazing team of public servants I have the honor and privilege to lead and work with. And as I always tell you, always be reminded that in the end, our work will speak for us. Since the inception of the Recovery Office in July 2021, we have worked hard to meet the statutory deadlines for obligations and expenditures. This is evidence to buy increased obligations of $16.3 million and increased expenditures of $60.4 million since I was last before you in June, just four months ago. The Recovery Office has and will continue to work in partnership with our funded agencies and organizations to fully obligate and expend the $641 million this city received in American Rescue Plan Act funds. We will also keep our commitment to accountability and transparency of these funds. Accordingly, there are several ways to get information and data on ARPA-funded initiatives. If we could go to Slide 2, please. Thank you. These are, yes, that's I. Thank you. Please follow us on Instagram, YouTube, X, and LinkedIn, and also visit our website at arpa.baltimorecity.gov for additional information on our ARPA indicators, as well as a dashboard that provides information on funding levels and commitments. Next slide, please. Next slide. I want to make sure that I ground us in information and making sure that we're all talking about the same terminology. So as a reminder, when I use the term commitment, that is defined as the total investment in a particular area across all fiscal years. As noted in the last hearing, the U.S. Treasury Department updated its definition of obligation to include interagency agreements, personnel costs, and administrative costs. As such, when using this term, I'm referring to those financial vehicles as well as third-party contracts. Also, an expenditure is the amount that's charged to an ARPA account. Next slide, please. For expenditures and obligations across the ARPA portfolio, a total of $619 million, $619.7 million has been obligated through August 2024. I fully expect for the remaining $21.4 million to be obligated by the December 31st, 2024 obligation deadline. Over the next two months, the Recovery Office will continue to conduct analyses and complete any necessary administrative tasks to ensure that we do not leave a dollar on the table. In addition, as of the end of August 2024, a total of $316.1 million has been expended, nearly half of the total $641 million that the city received. We are well on track to fully expand all ARPA funds by the December 31st, 2026 statutory deadline. Next slide. In the next several slides, we'll provide a summary of expenditures as compared to committed amounts by city agency, quasi-government agency, and aggregated for nonprofits that were directly awarded by the Recovery Office. Next slide. I just want to point out the contingency line item here, which is reserved for unanticipated costs for projects. Also, pending projects refers to any projects for which we do not have a finalized budget and have not yet moved to a contract or grant agreement. Next slide. Overall, city agencies have expended almost 44% of the funds committed to agency projects. There are a few projects with low and slow spend, and agencies with less than 50% spend will be discussed in greater detail further in the presentation. Next slide. Between quasi-government agencies and nonprofits directly awarded by the Recovery Office, over 67% of committed funds have been expended. Expended in this sense means that funds have been dispersed from the recovery office to the awarded organization. It does not necessarily mean that those amounts have been spent by the organization. But please rest assured that the recovery office closely monitors organization spend to determine if any adjustments to the grant agreement are needed. Next slide. I'll now give some summary information on agencies that have expended less than 50%. The, just, there are, there are bullets on the slides that provide information on some of the progress that's being made by agency. My remarks will focus on some of the rationale and some of the explanation for why you're either not seeing spend or you're seeing slow spend. So for BCFD, the interagency agreement was signed just six months ago in March of 2024. The existing contracts are being amended, and BCFD anticipates that all contract amendments will be completed by the end of this month. I'll also discuss some of the BCFD capital projects as a part of the detailed discussion on DGS projects. Next slide. BIC is well on track to complete the personal computer refresh by December 2025. The hybrid meeting room conversions are on track to be completed by the end of this year, and also the RSI software contract term, which started in March of 2024. Those payments are made in installments per the contract, therefore, we don't have any concerns that funds will not be spent timely. In addition, the actual spend for this line item is $1.4 million, and we're working with BIC to make the appropriate corrections within Workday to reflect that amount. Next slide. For broadband and digital equity, we're pleased to discuss that the amounts have greatly increased in terms of expenditures. The Digital Equity Fund will award a $2 million grant for a capital broadband project and additional digital literacy grants will be awarded in the coming months. For broadband phase one and two, all of these funds are fully obligated, and we expect for expenditures to increase as additional work on extending the city fiber network to public housing, connecting the city's broadband network to recreation centers, and extending Wi-Fi inside and outside public buildings with focused deployment on main streets continues. Next slide. For Baltimore city recreation and parks, there's been limited spend, mostly due to the complexity of projects. Most of our capital projects are pretty long-tail, and those are mostly our pools and recreation centers. For our pool projects specifically, Towanda and Coldstream were awarded in April 2024, and the first invoice has not yet been received by, from the contractor. However, predevelopment work is underway. Greater Model Pool was just awarded at yesterday's BOE, so we expect for that to move forward and to see expenditures soon. The notice to proceed was issued for the Gardenville Recreation Center in July 2024, so site clearing and grading work has started. Additionally, the Elijah Cummings Recreation Center bid due dates were extended because the initial round of bidding did not yield any bidders. However, bids were due at yesterday's BOE, where four bids were received. Next slide. For DGS specifically, for the City Library HVAC projects, the project was awarded in March 2024, and the notice to proceed was issued in April 2024. The design work has started, and construction should begin next month. We expect for work on all six libraries to be completed by December 2025. The capital improvements at multiple sites includes the City Hall roof as well as the Northwest Action Center. The Action Center is under construction and slated for completion at the end of this month. The City Hall roof was advertised in January 2024 with only one bid being received that was double the estimated cost. As such, DGS is researching alternative contract options with the goal of getting to the BOE in the October, November timeframe. For BCFD roofs, agreement was signed in March 2024. Work on all three stations that are in the scope is under contract. Expenditures are not expected until the completion of these projects, so you won't see any spending in our subsequent slides whenever we come before you. In addition, we anticipate that all projects will be completed by the end of the calendar year. For BCFD facility upgrades, the agreement was signed also in March 2024. All contracts have been amended to include necessary ARPA compliance language, and we anticipate that these projects will be completed in June 2026. Next slide. For the Department of Housing and Community Development, the Tivoli Agreement was just executed on Monday, so no expenditures yet. For wealth building, the goal of this project is to provide grants to homeowners to upgrade their homes and address deferred maintenance in moderately priced middle neighborhoods. And according to DCHD, there's 33 cases that have been completed with another 52 that are approved, and that they expect all cases to be completed by June 2025. But of course, completion will be contingent on the scope of the project for each home. For crime prevention through environmental design, which we call SEPTED, 48% of those funds are under contract with two of the subgrants, one to Greater Bay Brook Alliance and one to Bond Secures. Both of those subgrants were approved by BOE, and one approval just occurred yesterday at BOE. The developer incentives have also been awarded, and we anticipate grant agreements being submitted for approval to the BOE in November. For hubs, we approved over $3 million in subgrants to hub partners and sites recently. So partners have their own portfolio of homes, there are three agreements that were approved, and one is anticipated for the October 30th of the BOE. For hub partner sites, there are three agreements that have been approved, and two will be submitted for the 1030 BOE as well. For impact investment areas, about 52% of those funds are under contract. No funds that are under, are under contract for developer incentives. However, six subgrants have been approved, and another 10 will be approved by the BOE. The target approval date is also November 2024. We're also seeing some slow spend around acquisitions primarily because of the various legal stages involved in the acquisition process. And so we are having conversations with DCHD to identify what, if anything, can be done to expedite some of those stages or figure out if there are potentially places where we might need to reallocate funds for some of the homes that are a little bit earlier in the acquisition process, and we don't believe that they will be completed in time for the ARPA deadline in, in December 2026. We also identified that there are some staff not being charged the appropriate cost center, which would also impact the total expenditure line. So we are actively working with DCHD to resolve some of those issues and making those corrections in Workday. Next slide. For the Department of Public Works, for capital and operating improvements, we amended the interagency agreement in August 2024 to realign the budget line items based on other available funding sources. DPW is working on contracts to get work underway for locker room improvements at Bowley's Lane and for fencing at the Quarantine Road landfill. Next slide. The ADA Ramp Job Order Contract, citywide, West End, East were awarded, and the notice to proceed was issued in March, September, and August 2024, respectively. The goal is to reconstruct 1,400 ramps by June 2026. For our sidewalk repair, the contract approval was deferred to the November BOE, although the slides reflect October, there was a deferral that happened in yesterday's BOE. Next slide, please. For the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, specifically for group violence reduction, the expansion to the Southern District has been delayed, with current operations in the Western, Southwestern, Central, and Eastern districts. MONZI projects to expand to the Southern District by the end of this year, and the citywide expansion happening sometime in 2025. There's also some limited spend due to some challenges with invoicing, and MONZI is working with the organization to update invoicing and make sure that those are submitted accordingly. For subsidized employment, there's been less than anticipated uptake for the program. As such, the budget was reduced, and efforts are underway to expand the program to the Maryland Correctional Institute for Women, and also to have DPW to join as a partner agency to provide additional employment opportunities. Next slide. In short, for OPI and digital services, some of the underspend there is primarily because of staggered hiring in staff members and unfilled positions. Hiring is underway, as well as a restructure of the digital services team. Next slide. We'll also briefly cover quasi-governmental agencies that have expended less than 50%. Next slide, please. For Baltimore city public schools, this project includes temporary and permanent air conditioning installation, replacement of an athletic field, as well as renovation and design services. Work is underway with some work completed for air conditioning installation, and responses to requests for proposals for renovation and design services are anticipated by the end of the calendar year and services completed by the end of calendar year 2025. Next slide. For Enoch Pratt, the HVAC repair project was awarded in March 2024, and the notice to proceed was issued in April 2024. They've started design work, and construction is anticipated to begin next month, which will increase spend. Work at all six libraries are expected to be completed by December 2025. Next slide. So the next couple of slides provide a summary overview of nonprofit expenditures. Next slide. And again, these are only nonprofits directly awarded by the recovery office. Next slide. So this is just a listing of, again, all of the 45 nonprofits that were, that were directly awarded by the recovery office. Expenditures are influenced by a variety of factors such as agreement execution date, complexity of the project, and dispersment schedule. And if you go to the next slide, overall, 66.7% of committed funds have been expended. If you go to the next slide, there we go. So that bottom line will show you the total commitment amount versus the expenditures and then the percent that's expended. That concludes my presentation. Happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Well, I'll just say thank you again for being thorough and brief, so that's always good. You saw me also pump my fist when you mentioned Greater Model Pool, so obviously that's a feather in the cap for the city, not just Poppleton. But, but I'll just ask this question. I know the last time that you were here, we had talked about the spending rate of some of the agencies and where there might be some reallocation of funds, to use your term. Can you talk a little bit about where some funds may have been reallocated since our last conversation?
So there haven't been any reallocations since the last time I was here. When we had the budget hearing, we talked about about the $69 million that was reallocated to various projects, but there haven't been any reallocations since that time. We are actively working with the administration on, and with our city agencies to identify if there are places where we might need to reallocate before the deadline. So I expect that if we are to do so, we will certainly be having that conversation and sharing that information with the council once we make those decisions. So none at this time.
Okay, awesome. And then, just going back to, I'll use the pool as an example in terms of the spending, because I think there's some confusion, not from you or anyone else, but just for the public's edification. You know, there is the obligated, and there's expenditure of those funds, and we have the deadline to reach not only this year, but then the following year. Can you talk about, again, that, that process in terms of awarding something and then working with the contracts to get that actually implemented?
Sure. So although we've committed funding to the Department of Parks and Recreation, we then have to go through the process of accepting bids, but we have to have bidders for the project. And so in some cases, we've had challenges with getting contractors to do the work, or either some of the bids have come in excessively over what we anticipated. And in some cases, that resulted in having to go through a rebid process to allow for additional contractors to bid on the projects. Once we receive bids, those bids have to go through the BOE, that has to be awarded, and then we get a notice to proceed. Then there are lots of other administrative tasks, like permitting and things like that, that could also be challenges in, in a capital project beginning. So all of those processes lead to the long-tail time that the public may see and feel when it comes to some of our capital projects.
Thank you. Colleagues, questions? Councilmember Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So on the nonprofit side, it looks like, you know, there's pretty high spend for the most part, and your office is giving them direct technical assistance to make sure that these get, like, university partners and urban strategies are a little low, so are they getting technical assistance to assist? And then you're just going to hope and figure out if they need to have some reallocation, or how does that process work?
Yes, so we meet with all of our funded entities at a minimum once a month, depending on their risk assessment, we may meet with them quarterly. We are looking at expenditure reports that are provided to our agency, and we review against the total commitment. In addition to the sweep that we're doing for city agencies, if there are nonprofits that look as though they may not be able to spend by the deadline, we may have to look to make some reallocations there as well. Do we provide technical assistance? Absolutely. We provide job tools, job aids, in addition to our meetings with those organizations. If there are challenges or barriers in any of their project execution, we talk about those things, because what we first want to do is see if there is a solve before we look to recoup any funding. So we're actually doing all of that, but we will have to make some decisions about some nonprofits as well before the end of the deadline.
And the deadline we're talking about is December 31st this year?
That's correct.
Really quickly, this is just an addendum to your question. Are there certain issue areas or certain challenges that are coming up as far as technical assistance across some of the nonprofits that are, are there certain challenges you can highlight now that we're seeing more than often?
Yes. So for certain, one of the things that is a challenge is from the beginning is the amount of money that the city had and that we had to push out and the amount of time that we had to push it out. And so for some of our nonprofits, we increase their revenues substantially in short periods of time. What we're also seeing is that there is a varying level of federal grants management experience, as well as internal controls. And so I, I make no qualms about it, the American Rescue Plan Act monitoring and, and the requirements are very onerous and challenging for some nonprofits who probably have limited capacity in terms of staffing. And again, limited internal controls in terms of management, documentation, retention, policies for third-party determinations, procurement policies, travel policies. There are a lot of different things that the federal code of regulation requires for recipients of federal funds, and in some cases, these smaller organizations just don't have those things. And so working with them on appropriate invoicing, on appropriate documentation to support their expenses are things that I can easily identify as challenges with some of these organizations.
Thank you. And related to that, I think when we've talked about some of the agencies and sort of that definition of the obligated funding, so the nonprofits, they're already obligated. So the worry that we have is whether they're going to spend it in two years, not spend it by January, correct?
That's correct. So, yes. So we're doing some projections to, to determine based on the expenditure reports that we've received in office, what is their monthly level of spend? Based on that, do we think that there is money that could be recaptured? Or if it's a capital project, we're asking for things like their construction timelines that we understand, when we can expect for a construction project to be completed, and how that aligns with our deadline? So we're doing that analysis.
So you don't, but given that there may not need to be any reallocations from the nonprofits by December, or December 31st, just because they do have a little bit more leeway, or are you already looking like two years ahead to make sure?
We are looking to December 31st, 2026, because our commitment was not to leave a dollar on the table. And so that means that we will have to make some difficult decisions now, before the obligation deadline, so that if we do need to reallocate, we have time to go through all the administrative tasks.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because we would have to reallocate it, and it would have to still go through that same process of the agreements. Okay. Thank you for that. And then, I, you know, on the DHCD side, it's the agency I'm more concerned about. I'm grateful that we've been able to finally get that agreement to the BOE for Tivoli, so that, that is good news. That's been a long process that a lot of people have been involved in, so I'm grateful to your office and, of course, the DHCD and our folks in our neighborhood that have been dealing with that. So we're still seeing low spend on hubs in the IIA, and you addressed that a little bit, and the wealth building. These are all already obligated, right? So they're already on the obligation column for the deadline coming up, and you're just looking ahead to the two years to see whether or not there needs to be some other, I don't want to take any money from here, I'm just trying to understand what, what, we're not, we are, we're good with the 31st of December on DHCD, but not necessarily, we don't know how that's all, if this is all going to be obligated and expended by the 2026, correct?
That's correct.
Right, so, so I guess when you're looking at all of the various things that need to be looked at, you're still having to predict ahead of time, because if you have to make reallocations, it has to be done now. Okay. Well, it is October.
It is October. No one is more aware of that than this team.
It is October. When do you anticipate some of these decisions being made? Because if the decisions are made, and then they have to go through the whole process again around the BOE, that kind of has to be done tomorrow?
So, truthfully, yesterday. But, but we are keenly aware of the, the BOE calendar and schedules and when documentation has to be submitted in order to make the agenda. Our goal is to try to make decisions by the end of this month, no later than the middle of next month to make sure that we make whatever the final December BOE date is. But our goal is to not wait that long, but we're, we're planning everything out in the event that we do have to take it into, into the wire.
And obviously, many of us have our agencies that we care about the most, as well as monitoring, as well as the nonprofit. So I'm imagining you'll reach out So I'm imagining you'll reach out to us if there has to be some decisions that we need to be a part of.
Yes, for sure. As as mentioned, when I responded to Councilman Bullock, we will make sure that we share information with you all before we effectuate any changes. You know, again, it's it's never our goal to have to take any money back because we've made commitments and we've talked about them publicly for the last several years. And we know that our residents are counting on us to do the things that we said that we needed to do. But again, our commitment is not to leave a dollar on the table. This is a city with entirely too much need to allow any money to go back to the United States Treasury and we are committed to making sure that that doesn't happen, even if it does involve some very challenging decisions.
Thank you. Look forward to continuing that conversation. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. See any additional questions from committee members? Is there anything else that you'd like to share before you close out? Anything else we should be thinking of, thinking about also considering as moving forward?
No, just continue to to monitor all of our social media platforms because that is where you can get real-time data. That's not just the numbers that we often talk about in this room, but really the stories of how ARPA is impacting community.
I do have one note because I think you could have a little feather in your cap. So tell me about this Baltimore being ranked number three in the U.S. for equitable ARPA spending. Should toot your horn a little.
Well, thank you. The New School did an independent study looking at a hundred and seventy cities and jurisdictions and ranking them on equitable spending. And so Baltimore was ranked number three. They looked at our treasury reports as well as the initiatives that we are, that we're funding through ARPA and made their independent assessment and we were ranked number three. So very proud of the work that this team is doing, as well as the partners who are committed to helping us make sure that we are spending equitably in the city. So thank you.
No, thank you. Again, it's like I said, it's a feather in your cap. We'll clap for that. It's nice to have that. But again, again, thank you. Thank you for your time. We know this is a historic opportunity to invest in our city and our people in our city. So again, thank you for for being at the helm for that. So.
Thank you.
All right. At this point, we are going to then redirect. We're going to go back to Baltimore City Schools. We haven't been taking testimony, but sure, if you want to go. Yeah, we're not having questions, but if you have testimonies you'd like to submit, we can take that. But but appreciate you being here too. So but please share that with with us. Okay. All right. So we're going to then shift gears here. So thank you, City Schools. Okay, let's just do this. Give me a second. Let's just do supplemental really quick and get it get over with. We got, we don't have a quorum, but we need to have this hearing. So let's. School system will be about five minutes. So just, you know. All right. So apologies. Let's go ahead and do this. So bill number two four zero five eight five supplemental, special revenue fund operation, operating appropriation for two million one six hundred, one sixty-five thousand dollars. Again, we're going to go past our agency reports favorable from finance, favorable from law department, no objection for Office of Equity and Civil Rights, and then approved by the Board of Estimates. So please, Mayor's Office, go ahead.
Yep, that's correct, Mr. Chair. We stand by all the reports from the agencies.
Are there any questions from committee members? Finance here to speak on this?
Because there wasn't a quorum and we thought that they weren't going to, we weren't going to do anything with today. I think Laura kind of left, but I think their report is on file. Sure. Tyler Chanel, Mayor's Office of Government Relations, on behalf of the Department of Finance. The Department of Finance submitted a obviously favorable report on the FY twenty-five supplemental appropriation for the Center Place Extension Project. The Mayor and City Council of Baltimore and Baltimore County are working together on a project known as the Center Place Extension Project that will provide a new transportation connection between Baltimore City and historic Dundalk and Baltimore County. The Mayor and City Council of Baltimore and Baltimore County entered into a memorandum of understanding approved by the Board of Estimates on April fifth, two thousand and twenty-three, providing for the acquisition of the subject property for the project pursuant to ordinance twenty-four dash three two one, dated March seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The Mayor and City Council of Baltimore authorized the acquisition by purchase or condemnation of the fee, simple interest in block six nine nine zero, lots one through seven, block six nine nine one, lots one through twenty-six, and the bed Woodhouse Avenue needed for the purpose of laying or extending a public road and widening the Rawls Avenue as shown on plat number two forty dash A dash five six dash A in the Office of the Department of Transportation. Based on two independent appraisals for the project, it was determined that the highest fair market value for the acquisition of the properties of interest is two point one million dollars. Funding for the acquisition of the lots in reference has been received from Baltimore County. However, the fiscal twenty twenty-five adopted budget does not include an appropriation allowing the disbursement of these funds. This request for supplemental creates the appropriation authority to spend the received two million one hundred and sixty-five thousand on its intended purpose. And in terms of fiscal impact, the proposed supplemental creates a special fund appropriation that will allow the city to spend these funds. There is no anticipated recurring general fund impact associated with this project. And this action was approved by the Board of Estimates at their August seventh, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Therefore, the Department of Finance requests a favorable report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. And and thank you. We do have Laura Larson from the Department of Finance as well. But again, I think you've done an excellent job of reading that out. Is there anything else you'd like to add at this point?
No. Thank you. Thank you, Tyloar. My apologies for stepping out. I I will just note, this is consistent with our change in approach for how we budgeted state, federal and special awards in fiscal twenty-five. So we did anticipate that we would see additional supplementals as different instances come up. And I think this is just start, this is our first example. I can tell you that there's a couple more that are in the hopper. But but this is very routine and we appreciate the the council's consideration of the item.
Thank you very much. I don't have any questions from committee members. Is there anybody in the public here to testify or any testimony or questions? Not seeing any. All right. So we do not have a committee quorum today. So what we'll do is we will recess and hold a voting session at a later date, hopefully soon in the next couple of days. But thank you for being here. And then with that being recessed, we will now shift with bated breath back to the school system. So again, we really do appreciate your your patience with us. Also, you saw me leave a little bit earlier because I had to pick up my younger son from Baltimore City Schools. So again, this is something that's very near, dear to my heart and to the heart of some of our colleagues as well. So please jump right in and thank you. Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
If we could have the PowerPoint presentation. I can provide as much or as little detail as you like. So it's up to you.
All right.
I do want to extend the greetings of the City Schools Chief Financial Officer, Chris Doherty, to the Committee Chair, the Committee Members, the City of Baltimore, staff members, any City Schools participants who may be here and our community partners. We understand that people are interested in the financial well-being of City Schools and people take an interest, sorry, people take an interest. So quickly, what we have provided this year is the same as we had provided last year, which is, you know, I'll look at the fourth quarter. And when I get to the end, I can also offer some summary comments on how the year ended. City Schools just closed our books Monday evening. Per COMAR, we are required to submit our audited financial statements to the state no later than nine thirty each year. So we submitted them, our external auditors completed them and we submitted them on Monday evening. So essentially, the numbers are set, but we typically do not give details until the information has been provided to our board. Our board, per our policy on, on, you know, the the budget, will receive the information from the CEO no later than October the fifteenth. So we typically would provide a lot more detail after October fifteenth when we we would present to the board. So the first few slides are just kind of general information explaining the kind of information we're about to give and why we're all here. Okay. So, you know, it's, the purpose of our presentation is to comply with the City of Baltimore legislation, LO twenty-one dash zero 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 three, which basically says on a quarterly basis, we would report results so that the City Council would be mindful of where we are and, you know, hopefully project out to where we think we might end the year.
And I appreciate you going through that. And, you know, if you want to advance the slides, just let us know. You know, we appreciate you. Just say next slide and we'll keep moving right along.
Next slide, please.
There we go.
Okay, this is revenue. I just wanted to talk a little bit. I'll try to give some brief information on where our revenue comes from. As you likely know, the City Schools revenue is certainly more predictable than the City of Baltimore's revenue. We get our state and local revenue requirements from Maryland State Department of Education in their final state aid calculations that they give to us. And usually, we're, we receive them from the state, usually by the end of June. However, when we budget, we budget with one of their earlier preliminary numbers. So there's always some variance between what we budget and what the final numbers are. And, you know, in terms of the state revenue, we also have some variances related, first to the timing and then to any true-ups that may be applied. Like if if we were estimating non-public revenue, you know, and it turns out we get more, then it would be either a plus or minus for our actual revenue. So we have a few variables like that. The City of Baltimore revenue that is budgeted is also based, largely based on the maintenance of effort, which comes from the local required revenue from the state calculation. So what we know is that the the maintenance of effort or local required contributions, whichever is higher, that does not include the retiree health benefit funds that pass to and from the City of Baltimore and City Schools. It it has to do with the with the impact on our guaranteed tax base revenue. So by doing that transaction four times a year, it gives City Schools some additional money in guaranteed tax base, which we then in turn make a contribution to the Twenty First Century Program on behalf of the City of Baltimore. It's estimated to be about ten million each year. So federal revenue, our federal revenue generally includes Impact Aid, ROTC. We have a new kind of revenue in FY twenty twenty-four, which is the Emergency Connectivity Fund, which is administered through USAC, just like E-Rate, but it's separate from E-Rate, but very similar. So we hadn't budgeted that because frankly, we didn't know about its application to us at the beginning of the year. So we also have E-Rate money there. We have our IRS subsidy money that we have on our qualified school construction bonds. So that that plays through federal revenue also. Probably the one that most people would be interested in is talking about investment earnings. We had the same positive impact that the City of Baltimore had. What I do want to point out with is City Schools is far more restricted in how we may invest our money. We are limited to investing in kind of low-risk, no-risk vehicles. And it's dictated by state law and by board policy. So the major proponent of our investment, investments are T-bills. So as goes the T-bill rate, so goes City Schools' investment income. It it does fluctuate over the years. I mean, I will say that in FY twenty twenty-four, we recorded forty point two million dollars in investment income. It's it's astounding, almost, you know, we we did not imagine it would be that way. But then I'm sure nobody thought that the T-bill rate was going to stay above five percent for a significant portion of the year. So I just wanted to point out the variability of our investment income. In FY twenty twenty-four, of course, it was forty point two million dollars. In twenty-three, it was nineteen point four million. In FY twenty-two, it was one point one million. And in FY twenty twenty-one, it was twenty-four thousand. So it 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 goes all over the place. I will say that I, an adjustment that City Schools made in the FY twenty twenty-five budget was instead of budgeting a place or a million dollars, that's what we budgeted probably for twenty years, a million dollars. And sometimes it makes it, sometimes it goes over, sometimes it's under. So but in FY twenty twenty-five, the budgeted amount for investment income was increased to four point five million dollars. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We also have revenue that, again, varies with the year. It's other revenue and our other revenue includes, the largest one is the MSA revenue, the reimbursements we get from MSA for our Twenty First Century Program, for the administration program, and that's usually four to five million dollars each year. This year, we also got revenue for restitution, which relates to some of the lawsuits that have been submitted by a lot of LEAs that we were in, a few of them. And we got some money for the Juul, J-U-U-L, the, we got money for that and for the opioid settlements. And while the Juul settlement is a little more flexible, what we may use it for, we still have to account for it. So, you know, we'll get money, I think, for three more years for the Juul settlement. And we have to be able to show them how we spend the money. So we put it in assigned fund balance and we will very carefully create a new cost center and and things like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And how's that, how's that work with the opioid money as well?
The opioid one, that was a smaller amount, but that was about two and a half million. Okay. And that one, I believe they said that it had to be used for special education. It had to be tied in with special education. So, you know, just the various recoveries that have had to be done because of the opioid. But that was a one-time payment, as far as we know, of two and a half million dollars. So so we also have reimbursement agreements, reimbursable agreements usually related to the money that we get from some external partners like the Fund for Educational Excellence, things like that. They pay for some things. And we always have miscellaneous, so it's just, other revenue is unpredictable, just as Fed revenue is. But of course, we know our state and city revenue is is largely known by June of the prior fiscal year. So if we could go to the next slide, I would want to point out that these details are expenditures by MSD category. We, every LEA in the state is required to report our expenditures on the basis of MSD category. And those categories and what goes in them are detailed in the MSD Finance Manual. So when they do our audited basic financial statements, we report, everything in that is reported on the basis of the MSD categories. And I'd be happy to give you as much detail as you like. But it's it's things like, oh, in administration, that's where we put our IT money because that's what MSD said. So that's that's a compliance issue.
Got it.
And and also, COMAR requires that you not spend more in a given state category than you have appropriated. So we need to be mindful of that as well. So that if. So, the, if, next slide, please. The next slide presents our expenditures on the basis of object, which are the things people typically have deeper interest in, you know, like our salaries and wages, fringe benefits, contractual services, materials supplies, and so forth. I will say that because our personnel costs, which is the sum of the salary and wages, the O1 object, and our benefits, which is our O2 objects, that has close to three-quarters of our cost. So we pay a special interest to that. So just for knowledge purposes, we appropriated 70.3% of our total budget between those two objects. And when we came down to actual, it came out to 70.8. So we came very close to maintaining that proportion of personnel to non-personal costs. In terms of looking at our numbers, I did want to point out that property and equipment, when you see the total amount for the year, that's where we include the $20 million that city schools submits to 21st Century Project for our contribution. We contribute 10 on behalf of the city schools, based on the revenue transaction I spoke about, and 10 million is on behalf of city schools. Principal and interest dollar relates to the remaining two bond issuances we have, our revenue bonds, the qualified school construction bonds, which we issued in 2009 and 2011. End-to-end cost recovery, you can see that the number is considerably higher than what the original appropriated amount was. And that's due to the way we expended the money on the ESER grant. There was an incredible amount of grants. And the general fund gets a credit for the administrative costs, because that's where we charge those costs. So the ESER grants are ending as of 9/30, so there will not be a repeat of that. So it'll go back down to our historical levels. The transfers for us, city schools, transfers include the cost of our non-public tuition that we pay for students attending non-pub schools. Our seed school that we pay for our students who go there, it's usually about $2.5 to $2.6 million a year. The payments we make to the Department of Juvenile Services and DHS for children in their custody for education. And that's generally about $1.5 million, but it appears to be coming down now. And then we have Oakley, K.C., the out-of-county living arrangements and informal kinship care. So that goes there for transfers, because we pay other LEAs for, you know, their efforts on part of our children who are placed by the courts in their jurisdiction. So we have to pay them for the costs they incur. So that is the, that is how we developed those, those numbers that are there on the slide, our fourth quarter. But I had been advised that you were more interested in speaking about where we ended up the year. Okay. So that would be on Slide 7, which is, it's kind of a block thing here. But what this really gives you is, the first line is our total appropriations, the way we appropriate for our revenue. We have the basic amount of our budget, the operating budget that gets approved by the board and then by city council, plus any supplementals that might have come up during the year. So that was $1.418 billion for appropriations. And also, we carry over our encumbrances, which you can see was $102 million. The fourth quarter revenue, based on that original budget, was $365 million. Our total revenue for the entire year on a budget of $1.4 billion. The actual revenue turned out to be closer to $1.5 billion, so it was $1,489 million. So the increase is roughly, what, $72 million? And of that, we had an increase over budget or over appropriations of $39 million for the investment income we talked about. Our state revenue increased by $12 million. And other revenue increased by $19.8 million. And I can tell you where the details come from, if you like. But in summary, so our revenue, our actual revenue, if you look at our financial statements without the on behalf for the state teachers pension, was $1,489 million. So we compare that to our total expenditures of, including encumbrances, is $1.45 billion, which means roughly $39 million. There's an excess of revenue over expenditures, so that money would flow to our fund balance. Typically, we do have a certain amount, determined by board policy, as to what money should be unassigned, which might be the equivalent of, you know, a rainy day fund or whatever. It serves the same purpose. But the rest of it would flow to assigned fund balance. And the city school CEO, as the board's designee, is authorized to approve the placement of items in our assigned fund balance. So she did that, it's part of the audit. The auditors confirm what's in there and what she had approved, and that we got our formal approval. So you can see here, we did add some lines for the total expenditures and the operating results and the total revenue. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to provide any information I could.
I'll just say, you know, thank you again for the presentation. You're always pretty thorough and straightforward, so it's pretty clear to understand, so I appreciate that. I know we also had a presentation for the capital improvement program, and I know that Dr. Washington, so again, if you wanted to quickly go through that, I know it's getting a little late in the day, so if you would quickly go through that, that'd be great.
I absolutely will be very brief.
All right.
So I'm here on behalf of our COO. She had to leave to pick up her kids.
I understand.
Exactly. I am Cede Smith. I'm the executive director for planning, designing, construction, and for operations. So I'm going to actually just skip right to Slide 4. We'll hit that one real quick. Back one. That one, there we go. So the first thing I want to really talk about is the impact that we have on our budget from what we really need versus what we receive to be able to maintain our portfolio. With the portfolio that we have, that we maintain to maintain our population and to maintain our educational program across the district, we have an annual deficit of about $375 million in the capital and maintenance budgets. And that's combined between capital and maintenance. So that's really what we would need to maintain and continue to operate our buildings with, you know, adequate HVAC systems, elevators that work, roofs that don't leak, and, you know, keeping up with, you know, instructional technology needs and CTE programming and things like that. We really need $530 million every year for our portfolio of buildings. And we receive $155, roughly. So we are short, it's about $375 million. So when we receive, you know, the complaints about roofs that leak, HVAC systems that don't operate, buildings that have to close down because heating isn't operating, this is why. It really is hard to maintain our portfolio. And this is why we're constantly advocating for additional funding all the time for schools, because to maintain the portfolio we have for the students we need to educate, that would be the appropriate funding. And that is based on, you know, industry standards across the country for a portfolio of our size. So that's just, you know, the highlight of that one, just as a reminder for everybody where we stand. If we could go on to the next slide, and one more. So just so everybody is, of course, clear, most of our funds for capital do come from the state. Our anticipating funding for FY '26 right now is looking like $25 million from the state CIP. Our annual allocation of $19 million from the city CIP. And right now, we're expecting $45 million from the state Healthy Schools Facility Funds. Now, the one caveat to that, of course, is that our guaranteed percentage of the state Healthy Schools Facility Funds ends this year. This is the last year of our guaranteed percentage. We are still eligible for funding in healthy schools, but right now, we're eligible, we are guaranteed 50% of the funds that are put into that. And that ends in the legislative portfolio for that, this, after FY '26. So we will still get something. We will not be guaranteed that 50%, which means that portion will go down and our annual amount will go down. Of course, we have additional funding that we're using right now, which is Built to Learn. Built to Learn was HB1 funding that is doing a lot of our high school portfolio, although we are supplementing a lot of that because the high school plan for City College and Poly and Western is taking more than just what that money is. There was the Pass Through Grant, was a, I don't remember what bill number that was, but it did allocate $75 million to us, and that is supplementing the high school plan, as well as the new City Springs School. We are, of course, finishing up our 21st Century money. We are in construction on the last two schools in 21st Century Buildings Program right now. Commissioner John Rogers, he was approved. Finally, the GMP was approved yesterday at BOE, so they can start abatement on Monday. And that building can come down. We can start replacement school construction. And Frederick Douglass is already in construction for its renovation. So those are the last two schools in the 21st Century Buildings Program. Right now, for anybody who doesn't know, Frederick Douglass is relocated to its swing location in Northwestern and CJR is relocated to Southeast Building for its replacement building. Yep, and then, of course, we've been working through our ESER funding. We received approximately $110 million on the capital side. And we redid bathrooms in over 50 schools, as well as health suites in 21 schools, as a variety of other projects, but those were our biggest ones. And really, some big impact projects, because those bathrooms, we've heard about from a lot of schools, saying how much, how beautiful they are and how impactful they've been. And it wasn't something we could get to with our capital funding otherwise. So it has definitely made an impact. I am going to move on several slides. We're going to go forward, two more, I think, to Slide number nine. That one, yes. So what I want to hit up here is the projects that we are requesting in our FY '26 CIP. We are in the midst of construction of several other major projects outside of Built to Learn and the 21st Century Buildings Program projects. We're in the midst of a replacement building for Furly, which had to swing several years ago at this point because of a major structural issue. So that replacement building will be ready to occupy this coming summer. So summer of 2025, we'll be opening that school. The Marigi Fairing project, which is, was one of our most overutilized buildings. We purchased the property next door and have been building a K-2 annex there. So that's scheduled to open this year. We've also started the renovations of the Northeast Building for Vanguard Collegiate Middle School to move into. And we are just starting construction on the Armistead Gardens renovation and addition project, which really doubles the size of Armistead Gardens. It was the most overutilized school in the district when we were, when we were starting construction on that. So those four projects need to continue to have their funding, to be able to continue that construction and complete the construction in two of those cases. And that's the majority of our ask in the CIP this year, is the continued funding of those projects to complete them. Of course, we have several other systemics. You know, there's 36 systemics to still continue to do our HVAC replacements that are much needed, you know, our elevators. We have a lot of elevators in there, because we're actually trying to hit now the schools that don't have elevators and therefore not ADA compliant. And we're trying to actually install some new elevators in those buildings, as well as really do some major fire safety improvements, because fire alarms have been sorely neglected for years, because we've been focused on AC, HVAC roofs and things. And fire alarms don't qualify for healthy schools funding. So we have to get it through CIP. That's really the only funding source we have for fire alarms and sprinklers. So we have a lot of fire alarms and sprinklers in this year's CIP request. So that's really, you know, there's a couple, you know, we hit mixed, you know, a couple of the roofs, a couple of other, you know, things that are needed. But that really is the request. We'll say again, we've requested 43 projects. We anticipate with the anticipated funding of only $25 million from the state to really only get the funding for the four major projects that are under construction to continue those. We do not anticipate receiving enough funding to hit any of our systemic requests this year. Just so you know, we've actually, this past year, not including any of the ESER projects, we have completed 75 systemic projects in other, in buildings. So we are, you know, this is a constant, like we are consistently working through massive amounts of projects all the time in the capital program. And then in the course of brevity, we're going to skip a few more slides and go to, oh, let's see. Sorry, my COO did mark slides for me to talk about. So, and actually, I think that was the biggest one. That was the last one she actually had for me to really talk about.
Yeah, I was saying, Councilor Ramos and I were saying the same thing to ourselves. We like the maps, so we're looking at the maps.
You want me to hit the maps? I can, I can talk about the maps.
They're nice, no, we don't have to get to, but they're, they're very instructive. So, yeah, we appreciate that.
Yeah, so, yeah, if you go back a few slides, we can, you know, there's the map of where we, across the district, we have where all of our CIP requests are. And it actually is in correlation to our Community Conditions Index, which we have created an index that really scores investments in areas of the city. And then where we're hitting across the city with our systemic projects and our major replacement projects.
There is one issue, and I know it gets more complicated than people want to really recognize, but I think it's worth talking about HVAC systems, but also the electrical system, right? And so can you talk a little bit about, about that process? Because again, it requires, you know, capital investment in terms of electricity, but then also it's not a quick fix in terms of AC.
Absolutely. So, and actually then, we will skip right to Slide, which slide is it? 19. Where we actually talk about the fact that we have finally hit all of our classrooms being air-conditioned. As of June this past year, all of our classrooms in the district are air-conditioned. Hmm? All the classrooms do. All the classrooms do. Yes. Just saying classrooms, and I want to be very specific about being classrooms. The libraries are not necessarily included, the gymnasiums, auditoriums, hallways, offices. Our priority was classrooms. We've completed the classroom priorities. And of course, City College, given that they have a, you know, they're going to be swinging into swing space and then going into their renovated building, we didn't want to invest a ton of money doing a full HVAC system there when we were going to turn around and get one when they move back into their new building, or their newly renovated building anyway. But yes, every classroom that is being used right now in the district is air-conditioned. And yes, we had to do some electrical upgrades. We also had to skip back and do some things like window air conditioners as a temporary measure, while we actually do still wait for funding for full HVAC, which would require electrical upgrades, because it is a significant electrical impact on our buildings to do air conditioning in buildings that did not have air conditioning. It definitely, you know, doubles and triples the size, the amount of electrical usage we have in the building, which also then doubles and triples our electrical bills. Just so we're also very clear of how that impacts down the line. Our energy bills, of course, increase as we do that as well, because we now have to pay for that increased electricity to support that air conditioning. But, yeah, the air conditioning project has not been easy, has not been simple, but it has, we have made a significant dent in it now. And we are going back. All those schools will now, that have the, either their VPU's, the vertical package units that we installed, or window air conditioners, or a variety of those two things. And going back and still keeping those projects in for full HVAC upgrades in future CIPs.
No, thank you for that. But it also really illustrates the challenge we have with the gap in funding in terms of what we need versus what we have and what we're getting. So I'm glad you were able to amplify that. Thank you.
Yes.
And I think that should, I think that's better.
That's all I'll hit on, unless anybody else has any other questions. Like you guys can review that.
Well, look, I guess I thank you and Councilor Ramos and I, we see, we both have vested interests. I'm not going to name the school, or the schools, but, but clearly, we, there's several of us that do. But you've answered my question. Councilor Ramos, did you have any, any comments or questions as we wrap up?
I just wanted some clarity on, on the air conditioning piece. So, you know, part of cities renovation, I represent city, is that HVAC, as well as all the other things that we want to do with the school.
Yes, yes.
So the students now in the classrooms have just a temporary situation.
Yes.
Until we can, because that building itself is historic, so some of the windows don't open. So you have a different scenario. So it must have been a real challenge. And so same with Poly, right? Poly also, okay.
Well, Poly and Western had vertical package units. We received vertical package units several years ago. City College at the time, because of its electrical infrastructure, could not support vertical package units. And that's why they were not installed at City College right from the start. So because of the pressure to get something in there, at least through this year, while they're still in the building before they move into their swing space, yeah, we did go ahead and get the window units. I do know that, for example, when every window unit is turned on in the building, it does tend to flip a couple breakers.
Yeah, I can imagine.
So it, it cools, and window air conditioners don't necessarily bring temperatures down to, you know, what, you know, 65, like, you know, some people think 65 is comfortable, some people think 75 is comfortable, you know, what it is. It cools it down. It is not, you know, it's not the perfect scenario. It is only a year. That's kind of what we're looking at for City College, is it's only a year.
I haven't talked to Principal Harkman, but I can just imagine that she's got it all timed. You know, you can have that on here, and you can do this on there, and she's got it all coordinated. I guarantee that that is what's happening.
Yes.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. It's very exciting to see, and I It's very exciting to see, and I know when I see students and parents walking into a brand-new renovated building, we just had another opening last year at Montebello, it changes the whole trajectory of how, you know, the students think about themselves and about their learning, so this is good stuff.
It absolutely does, yes.
Yeah, thank you.
And absolutely, Councilman Ramos, thank you for saying that. Again, it does, it does make a difference. The environment makes a big difference. So, again, we, we appreciate, you know, you guys taking the time, being with us today, always being, being transparent. We just look forward to continued progress in this area. So, so again, I, I know that the hour is late, and we appreciate you hanging out with us, but I don't see any more questions from the public or anyone else here. So, again, I guess we, we will wrap up, and this hearing will be adjourned. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
We are limited to investing in kind of low-risk, no-risk vehicles, and it's dictated by state law and by board policy. So the major proponent of our investment, uh, investments are T-bills. So as goes the T-bill rate, so goes City Schools' investment income. It, it does fluctuate over the years. I mean, I will say that in FY 2024, we recorded forty-point-two million dollars in investment income. It's, it's astounding, almost, you know, we, we did not imagine it would be that way, but then, I'm sure nobody thought that the T-bill rate was gonna stay above five percent for a significant portion of the year. So, I just wanted to point out the, uh, the variability of our investment income. In FY 2024, of course, it was forty-point-two million dollars. In '23, it was nineteen-point-four million. In FY '22, it was one-point-one million, and in FY 2021, it was twenty-four thousand. So it, it, it goes all over the place. I will say that I, a, an adjustment that City Schools made in the FY 2025 budget was, instead of budgeting a place or a, a million dollars, that's what we budgeted probably for twenty years, a million dollars, and sometimes it makes it, sometimes it goes over, sometimes it's under. So, uh, but in FY 2025, the budgeted amount for investment income was increased to four-point-five million dollars. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We also have revenue that, again, varies with the year. It's other revenue, and our other revenue includes, the largest one is the MSA revenue, the reimbursements we get from MSA for our Twenty-First Century program, for the administration program, and that's usually four to five million dollars each year. This year, we also got revenue for restitution, which relates to some of the lawsuits that have been submitted by a lot of LEAs, and we were in a few of them, and we got some money for the Juul, J-U-U-L, the, we, we got money for that, and for the opioid settlements. And while the Juul settlement is a little more flexible, what we may use it for, we still have to account for it. So, you know, we'll get money, I think, for three more years for the Juul settlement, and we have to be able to show them how we spend the money, so we put it in assigned fund balance, and we will very carefully create a new cost center and, and things like, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And how's, how's that work with the opioid money as well?
The opioid one, that was a smaller amount, but that was about two-and-a-half million, okay? And that one, I believe they said that it had to be used for special education, it had to be tied in with special education. So, uh, you know, just the various recoveries that have had to be done because of the opioid, but that was a one-time payment, as far as we know, of two-and-a-half million dollars. So, um, let's see, so we also have reimbursement agreements, reimbursable agreements usually related to the money that we get from some external partners, like the Fund for Educational Excellence, things like that, they pay for some things. And we always have miscellaneous rent, so it's just, other revenue is unpredictable, just as Fed revenue is, but of course, we know our state and city revenue is, is largely known by June of the prior fiscal year. So if we could go to the next slide, I would want to point out that this details our expenditures by MSD category. We, every LEA in the state is required to report our expenditures on the basis of MSD category, and those categories and what goes in them are detailed in the MSD Finance Manual. So when they do our audit of basic financial statements, we report, everything in that is reported on the basis of the MSD categories, and I'd be happy to give you as much detail as you like, but it's, it's things like, oh, in administration, that's where we put our IT money, because that's what MSD said, so that's, that's a compliance issue.
Got it.
And, and also, COMAR requires that you not spend more in a given state category than you have appropriated, so we need to be mindful of that as well. Okay? So, then, if, next slide, please. The next slide presents our, our expenditures on the basis of object, which are the things people typically have deeper interest in, you know, like our salaries and wages, fringe benefits, contractual services, material supplies, and so forth. I will say that because our personnel costs, which is the sum of the salary and wage is the O1 object, and our benefits, which is our O2 objects, that has close to three-quarters of our cost, so we pay a special interest to that. So just for knowledge purposes, our, we appropriated seventy-point-three percent of our, our total budget between those two objects, and when we came down to actual, it came out to seventy-point-eight, so we came very close to maintaining that, that proportion of personnel to non-personal costs. In terms of looking at our numbers, I did want to point out that property and equipment, when you see the total amount for the year, that's where we include the twenty million that City Schools submits to Twenty-First Century Project for our contribution. We do, we contribute ten on behalf of the City Schools, based on the revenue transaction I spoke about, and ten million is, is on behalf of City Schools. Principal and interest, all that relates to, the, the remaining two bond issuances we have are revenue bonds, the qualified school construction bonds, which we issued in 2009 and 2011. Endure cost recovery, you can see that the number is considerably higher than what the original appropriated amount was, and that's due to the way we expended the money on the ESSER grant. There was an incredible amount of, of grants, and, and the, the general fund gets a credit for the administrative costs, because that's where we charge those costs. So the ESSER grants are ending as of 9/30, so there will not be a repeat of that. So it'll go back down to our historical levels. The transfers for us, City Schools, transfers include the cost of our non-public tuition that we pay for students attending non-pub schools, our seed school that we pay for our students who go there, it's usually about two-point-five to two-point-six million a year, the payments we make to the Department of Juvenile Services and DHS for children in their custody for education, and that's generally about one-point-five million, but it appears to be coming down now. And then we have Okla IKC, the out-of-county living arrangements, and informal kinship care, so that goes there for transfers, because we pay other LEAs for, you know, their efforts on part of our children who are placed by, by the courts in, in their jurisdiction, so we have to pay them for the costs they incur. So that is the, that is how we developed those, those numbers that are there on the slide, our fourth quarter, but I, I had been advised you were more interested in speaking about where we ended up the year. Okay? So that would be on slide seven, which is, it's kind of a block thing here, but what, what this really gives you is, the first line is our total appropriations, the way we appropriate for our revenue, we have the basic amount of our budget, the operating budget, that, that gets approved by the board and then by city council, plus any supplementals that might have come up during the year. So that was one point, four-one-eight billion dollars for appropriations, and also, we carry over our encumbrances, which you can see was one-hundred-and-two million. The fourth quarter revenue, based on that original budget, was three-hundred-and-sixty-five million. Our total revenue for the entire year, on a budget of one, one-point-four billion, the actual revenue turned out to be closer to one-point-five billion, so it was one, one billion four-hundred-and-eighty-nine million. So the, the increase is roughly, what, seventy, seventy-two million, and of that, we had an increase over budget or over appropriations of thirty-nine million for the investment income we talked about. Our state revenue increased by twelve million, and other revenue increased by nineteen-point-eight million, and I can tell you where the details come from if you like. But in summary, so our revenue, our actual revenue, if you look at our financial statements without the on behalf for the state teachers pension, was one billion four-hundred, one billion four-hundred-and-eighty-nine million dollars. So we compare that to our total expenditures of, including encumbrances, is one, one-point-four, one-point-four-five oh billion, which means roughly thirty-nine million. There's an excess of revenue over expenditures, so that money would flow to our fund balance. Typically, we, we do have a certain amount determined by board policy as to what money should be unassigned, which might be the equivalent of, you know, a rainy day fund or whatever, it serves the same purpose, but the rest of it would flow to assigned fund balance. And the City Schools CEO, as the board's designee, is authorized to approve the placement of items in our assigned fund balance. So she did that, it's part of the audit, the auditors confirm what's in there and, and what she had approved, and that we got our, our formal approval. So you can see here, we, we did add some lines for the total expenditures and the, and the operating results and the total revenue, so if you have any questions, I'd be happy to provide any information I could.
I'll, I'll just say, you know, thank you again for the presentation. You're always pretty thorough and straightforward, so it's, it's pretty clear to understand, so I appreciate that. I know we also had a presentation for the capital improvement program, and I know that Dr. Washington, so, so again, if you wanted to quickly go through that, I know it's getting a little late in the day, so if you will quickly go through that, that'd be great.
I absolutely will be very brief.
All right.
So I'm here on behalf of our COO, she had to, she had to leave to pick up her kids. I am-
I understand.
Exactly. I am Sadie Smith, I'm the Executive Director for Planning, Design, and Construction for Operations. So I'm going to actually just skip right to slide four. We'll hit that one real quick. Back one. That one, there we go. So the first thing I want to really talk about is the impact that we have on our budget from what we really need versus what we receive to be able to maintain our portfolio. With the portfolio that we have, that we maintain to maintain our population and to maintain our educational program across the district, we have an annual deficit of about three-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars in the capital and maintenance budgets, and that's, so that's combined between capital and maintenance. So that's really what we would need to maintain and continue to operate our buildings with, you know, adequate HVAC systems, elevators that work, roofs that don't leak, and, you know, keeping up with, you know, that, you know, instructional technology needs and CTE programming and things like that. We really need five-hundred-and-thirty million dollars every year for our portfolio of buildings, and we receive one-hundred-and-fifty-five, roughly. So we are short, it's about three-hundred-and-seventy-five million dollars. So when we receive, you know, the complaints about roofs that leak, HVAC systems that don't operate, buildings that have to close down because heating isn't operating, this is why. It really is hard to maintain our portfolio, and this is why we're constantly advocating for additional funding all the time for schools, because to maintain the portfolio we have for the students we need to educate, that would be the appropriate funding, and that is based on, you know, industry standards across the country for a portfolio of our size. So that's just, you know, the highlight of that one, just as a reminder for everybody where we stand. If we could go on to the next slide, and one more. So just, so everybody is, of course, clear, most of our funds for capital do come from the state. Our anticipating funding for FY '26 right now is looking like twenty-five million dollars from the state CIP, our annual allocation of nineteen million dollars from the state CIP, and right now, we're expecting forty-five million dollars from the state Healthy Schools' facility funds. Now, the one caveat to that, of course, is that our guaranteed percentage of the state Healthy Schools' facility funds ends this year. This is the last year of our guaranteed percentage. We are still eligible for funding in healthy schools, but right now, we're eligible, we are guaranteed fifty percent of the funds that are put into that, and that ends in the legislative portfolio for that, this, this cut after FY '26. So we'll, we will still get something, we will not be guaranteed that fifty percent, which means that portion will go down and our, our annual amount will go down. Of course, we have additional funding that we're using right now, which is Built to Learn. Built to Learn was HB1 funding that was, that is doing a lot of our high school portfolio, although we are supplementing a lot of that because the high school plan for City College and Poly and Western is taking more than just what that money is. There was the pass-through grant was a, I don't remember what bill number that was, but it did allocate seventy-five million dollars to us, and that is supplementing the high school plan, as well as the new City Springs School. We are, of course, finishing up our Twenty-First Century money. We are in construction on the last two schools in Twenty-First Century Buildings Program right now. Commerz John Rogers, he was approved, finally, the GMP was approved yesterday at BOE, so they can start abatement on Monday, and that building can come down, we can start replacement school construction, and Frederick Douglass is already in construction for its renovation. So those are the last two schools in the Twenty-First Century Buildings Program. Right now, for anybody who doesn't know, Frederick Douglass is relocated to its swing location in Northwestern and CJR is relocated to Southeast Building for its replacement building. Yep, and then, of course, we've been working through our ESSER funding. We received approximately one-hundred-and-ten million on the capital side, and we redid bathrooms in over fifty schools, as well as health suites in twenty-one schools, as a variety of other projects, but those were our biggest ones, and really some big impact projects, because those bathrooms, we've heard about from a lot of schools, saying how much, how beautiful they are and how impactful they've been, and it wasn't something we could get to with our capital funding otherwise. So it has definitely made an impact. I am going to move on several slides. We're gonna go forward of two more, I think, to slide number nine? That one, yes. So what I want to hit up here is the projects that we are requesting in our FY '26 CIP. We are in the midst of construction of several other major projects outside of Built to Learn and the Twenty-First Century Buildings Program projects. We're in the midst of a replacement building for Furley, which had to swing several years ago at this point because of a major structural issue. So that replacement building will be ready to occupy this coming summer, so summer of 2025, we'll be opening that school. The Marigi Fairing project, which is, was one of our most overutilized buildings. We purchased the property next door and have been building a K-1 and K-2 annex there, so that's gonna, that's scheduled to open this year. We've also started the renovations of the Northeast Building for Vanguard Collegiate Middle School to move into, and we are just starting construction on the Armistead Gardens renovation and addition project, which really doubles the size of Armistead Gardens. It was the most overutilized school in the district when we were, when we were starting construction on that. So those four projects need to continue to have their funding, to be able to continue that construction and complete the construction in two of those cases. And that's the majority of our ask in the CIP this year, is the continued funding of those projects to complete them. Of course, we have several other systemics, you know, there's thirty-six systemics to still continue to do our HVAC replacements that are much needed, you know, our elevators. We have a lot of elevators in there, because we're actually trying to hit now the schools that don't have elevators and therefore not ADA compliant, and we're trying to actually install some new elevators in those buildings, as well as really do some major fire safety improvements, because fire alarms have been sorely neglected for years, because we've been focused on AC, HVAC roofs and things, and, and fire alarms don't qualify for healthy schools' funding, so we have to get it through CIP. That's really the only funding source we have for fire- the only funding source we have for fire alarms and sprinklers. So we have a lot of fire alarms and sprinklers in this year's CIP request. So that's really, you know, there's, there's a couple, you know, we hit or mixed, you know, a couple other roofs, a couple other, you know, things that are needed, but that really is the request. We'll say again, we've requested 43 projects. We anticipate with the, with the anticipated funding of only $25 million from the state to really only get the funding for the four major projects that are under construction to continue those. We do not anticipate receiving enough funding to hit any of our systemic requests this year. Just so you know, we've actually this past year not including any of the ESER projects. We have completed 75 systemic projects in other, in, in buildings. So we are, you know, this is a, a constant, like we are, we are consistently working through massive amounts of projects all the time in the capital program. And then in the course of brevity, we're going to skip a few more slides and go to, oh, let's see. Sorry, my COO did mark slides for me to talk about, so, and actually, I think that was the biggest one, that was the last one she actually had for me to really talk about. Yeah.
I was saying, Councilmember Ramos and I were saying the same thing to ourselves. We like the maps, so we're looking at the maps.
You want me to hit the maps? I can, I can talk about the maps.
They're nice. No, we don't have to get to, but they're, but they're, they're very instructive, so we appreciate that.
Yeah, if you go back a few slides, we can, you know, there's the map of where we, across the district, we have where all of our CIP requests are, and it actually is in correlation to our community conditions index, which we have created an index that really scores investments in areas of the, of the city, and then where we're hitting across the city with our systemic projects and our, our major replacement projects.
There, there is one issue, and I know it, it's, it's more complicated than people want to really recognize, but I think it's worth talking about HVAC systems, but also the electrical system, right? And, and so can you talk a little bit about, about that process? Because again, it requires, you know, capital investment in terms of electricity, but then also it's not a quick fix in terms of AC.
Absolutely. So and actually then, we will skip right to Slide, which slide is it? 19. Where we actually talk about the fact that we have finally hit all of our classrooms being air-conditioned. As of June this past year, all of our classrooms in the district are air-conditioned. Hmm? All the classrooms do. All the classrooms do. Yes. Just saying classrooms, and I want to be very specific about being classrooms. The libraries are not necessarily included, the gymnasiums, auditoriums, hallways, offices. Our priority was classrooms. We, we've completed the, the classroom priorities, and of course, City College, given that they have a, you know, they're going to be swinging into swing space and then going into their renovated building, we didn't want to invest a ton of money doing a full HVAC system there when we were going to turn around and get one when they move it back into their new building, or their newly renovated building anyway. But yes, every classroom that is being used right now in the district is air-conditioned. And yes, we had to do some electrical upgrades. We also had to skip back and do some things like window air conditioners as a temporary measure while we actually do still wait for funding for full HVAC, which would require electrical upgrades, because it is a significant electrical impact on our buildings to do air conditioning in buildings that did not have air conditioning. It definitely, you know, doubles and triples the, the size, the amount of electrical usage we have in the building, which also then doubles and triples our electrical bills. Just so we're also very clear of how that impacts down the line. Our energy bills, of course, increase as we do that as well, because we now have to pay for that increased electricity to support that air conditioning. But yeah, the air conditioning project has not been easy, has not been simple, but it has, we have made a significant dent in it now, and we are going back. All those schools will now that have the, either their VPU's, the vertical package units that we installed, or window air conditioners, or a variety of those two things, and going back and still keeping those projects in for full HVAC upgrades in future CIPs.
Well, thank you for that, but it also really illustrates the challenge we have with the gap in funding in terms of what we need versus what we have and what we're getting. So I'm glad you were able to amplify that. Thank you.
Yes.
And I think that should...
That's all I'll hit on unless anybody else has any other questions, like you guys can review that.
Well, look, I guess I thank you and Councilmember Ramos and I, we see, we both have invested interests. I'm not going to name the school or the schools, but, but clearly we, there's several of us that, that do. But you've answered my question. Councilmember Ramos, did you have any, any comments or questions as we wrap up?
I just wanted some clarity on, on the air conditioning piece. So, you know, part of city's renovation, I represent city, is, is that HVAC as well as all the other things that we want to do with the school.
Yes, yes.
So the, the students now in the classrooms have just a temporary situation until we can, because that building itself is, is historic, so some of the windows don't open. So you have a different scenario. Must have been a real challenge. And so same with Poly, right? Poly also, okay.
Well, Poly, Poly and Western had vertical package units, received vertical package units several years ago. City College at the time, because of its electrical infrastructure, could not support vertical package units, and that's why they were not installed at, at City College right from the start. So because of the pressure to get something in there at least through this year while they're still in the building before they move into their swing space, yeah, we did go ahead and get the window units. I do know that, for example, when every window unit is turned on in the building, it does tend to flip a couple breakers.
Yeah, I can imagine.
So it, it cools, and, and window air conditioners don't necessarily bring temperatures down to, you know, what, you know, 65, like, you know, some people think 65 is comfortable, some people think 75 is comfortable, you know, what it is. It cools it down. It is not, you know, it's not the perfect scenario. It is only a year. That's kind of what we're looking out for City College is it's only a year.
I haven't talked to Principal Harkman, but I can just imagine that she's got it all timed. You know, you can have that on here and you can do this on there, and she's got it all coordinated. I guarantee that that is what's happening.
Yes.
Okay, thanks for, for clarifying that. It's very exciting to see, and I know when I see students and parents walking into a brand new renovated building, we just had another opening last year at Montebello, it changes the whole trajectory of how, you know, the students think about themselves and about their learning. So this is good stuff. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And absolutely, Councilmember Ramos, thank you for saying that. Again, it does, it does make a difference. The environment makes a big difference. So again, we, we appreciate, you know, you guys taking the time, being with us today, always being, being transparent. We just look forward to continued progress in this area. So, so again, I, I know that the hour is late and we appreciate you hanging out with us, but I don't see any more questions from the public or anyone else here. So again, I guess we will, we will wrap up and this hearing will be adjourned. So again, thank you so much.
Thank you.